Great. It is May 6, 2025, and we're returning from a closed executive session. And we're back into open session now. Item number three is a motion for adjournment. Could I get one, please?
So moved, White Line.
Second, Burgis.
Moved by White Line, second by Burgis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Six to zero. We are adjourned from the executive session. Part of our agenda. We're going to transition into our work session. So it is May 6, 2025, and this is the City of Iowa City Work Session. We have some items that we're going to wait until 4:00 PM to address because I don't see all of P&amp;Z members here yet. So we're going to move. I'm going to go ahead and take us down to item number three, which is clarification of agenda items. And we'll go through, we'll also do item number four and maybe item number six. So clarification of agenda items. Here are nothing. We're going to move on to item number four, which is information packet discussions. We have three. We're going to start with April 17.
Mayor, can I ask a question very quickly about the pullout? I should know this with clarifications. If I just wanted to make a comment about something that was on the agenda, and I can do it in open session or informal.
Yes.
So that would just be 6H. I just want to make a comment on it.
Yeah, so then if you wanted to do that.
I mean, it doesn't really need to be pulled.
Well, you would do that during the consent because we would have our.
All right, any comments from?
So Eric, Counselor Alter wants to make comments about some, an information packet.
No, no, no. I'm sorry, not on information packet. I'm, you had, I was still trying to process my thoughts. It's actually about the formal agenda, the consent agenda. I just want to make a comment about one of the items.
Yes, you can always, yes.
So I can just do that during session.
During that time.
Okay, I don't need to call it out now.
During that time, okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right, great. So we're on information packet, April 17. We're going to move on to information packet, April 24.
I'd just like to note that IP3, the Joint Entities Meeting Minutes, had some errors. I have already written Julie Parsons and Marley Mesh for corrections. They will be presented at the next Joint Entities Meeting.
And we'll move on to May 1.
Say thanks to the staff for the Affordable Housing Fund memo. I found that very informative, so thank you for putting that together.
We're going to switch down to item number six, which is council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees. Did we meet between Economic Development Committee?
I, just procedurally, I was wondering if this is when we would talk about that.
Yes.
Yes.
Economic Development Committee meeting.
Okay. This one. I just wanted to say that we had a really good conversation about the beginnings of a process for the Sycamore Mall area in terms of creating whatever.
Strategic investment districts.
District, yes. And I really liked the way that the folks involved are going about doing their absolute best to make it an all-inclusive holistic process. And so I believe that, I'm excited to see what they bring forward this summer for first steps.
Yeah, so it would be greater Iowa City that's leading that charge. And people should see on their website, and also we're co-promoting some of these things for sessions, for community engagement, for what could happen in a strategic investment district in the Southeast Side.
Yeah. So yeah, I would encourage residents within that district, like the Sycamore Mall area. What's it actually called now?
Icy Marketplace.
Icy Marketplace with the, with the Panera in the movie theater. But it's not just that area. It's a, it's a pretty sizable. So if you live close to that area or relatively close to that area, I would recommend going to Greater Iowa City's website and getting involved, seeing if you can get your voice heard in this process.
Especially east siders all around, since there's such a desert for retail there.
Anything else for item six? Here are nothing else. We're going to take a quick break and be back at 4:00 PM to continue our work session.
My laptop was like, you're updating now.
Oh, at least you've got five minutes.
Got it. I will.
We'll invite P&amp;Z.
Start.
You're on now.
All right, we are on. Mics are hot. All right, we're going to continue our work session on May 6, 2025, and we're going to go to item number one, which is rezoning North Governor Street. And we've asked for P&amp;Z to join us. And oftentimes, when the council is have a rezoning item before us, if there is the likelihood that the majority of the council would not vote in conjunction with the P&amp;Z that we invite you all here. We did have a petition which required a supermajority to vote. And so that's why we have you all here today because when in that informal vote, there was not enough sufficient that would be inclined to vote with P&amp;Z. And this is an opportunity for you all to come and just share something about that conversation, that interaction that you would like council to know. I do understand that there was one individual that did not vote with this item. And so we would, you know, welcome all opinions and thoughts. So we'll turn it over to you, P&amp;Z, at this time. Who wants to go first? Scott, since you're the chair.
Yeah, sure. I'm happy to start. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if the council has any specific questions, I'm more than happy to try to share my perspective or otherwise I can help you share a little bit about why I made the motion that I did and why I voted the way that I did. So I mean, in brief, I think this is a great opportunity to take land that's now mostly been in light and turn it into housing, which Iowa City very much needs. And I can't think of too many better voices to do it. I mean, this is close to a grocery store, mass transit, two arterial streets in downtown. You know, there are two main objections, as I understand them, that I think others have done a nice job of articulating. But I don't think that either of them is a good reason it was to me to restrict our housing supply. The main complaint is that this is going to result in more traffic in the neighborhood. And that is the natural result of expanding access to housing and providing more places for people to live. But I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. You know, the city engineer did look at the capacity of Dodge and Muscatine and found that those streets are really substantially under capacity. I think they're operating at about a third of their capacity. So, you know, traffic did not strike me as a major concern. And density also has a lot of benefits. You know, there are cultural, environmental, financial, and other benefits associated to having a dense community and a lot of people in the same place. You know, there are also a number of people that expressed concerns with the exact layout and the plan for the site that the builders have. You know, that's why we have provisions in the zoning code and the building code that govern aesthetics and ensure that all of these projects are evaluated and treated equally. It also, you know, is not directly a zoning reclassification issue. You know, today, we're essentially evaluating a rezoning petition, which asks whether it makes sense to clean up a bunch of out-of-date zoning classifications that apply to this property and approve its use is multifamily housing. And to me, the answer to that is clearly yes and would help bring down the price of housing in our community. So that's why I made the motion that I did.
Thank you.
I think mine was the dissenting vote, if I'm not mistaken. The reason, that's my neighborhood, first off. And you know, I hate to come to a meeting and it's the people in the neighborhood that say, oh, I don't want that in my neighborhood. It's not about that. Can you hear me? Okay, that's better. But if you travel North Dodge and Governor, this area is an island in the middle of those two, one going one way, one coming the other way. Often, you have people going the wrong way. So unless there is a way to direct that new traffic with those three-story, three buildings of additional people, then we're going to have a problem there. And there are lots of, there's a school there right at the corner, just more traffic. It's not about the traffic, it's the way it's directed and signs that say one way. Just this week, this weekend, we're traveling over Governor, and there's a car coming in the wrong direction and speeding. So these are concerns that I have about my neighborhood. And if there's a way, and I ask, is there going to be a stoplight there? No, no need for it. Well, how are you going to direct that traffic coming from those apartments or that housing onto North Dodge and onto Governor? My concern.
All right, I'll go ahead. Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Mr. Quaharst, I think covered it very well. So I have really three points. I have two months left, and I've completed 10 years on planning and zoning. So I think about this stuff a lot and looked at it for many, 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 many years. And there's one conclusion I've come to is people that make an application to the city, they follow all the rules, they follow the codes, they work with city staff, they have to expect some predictability for approval because the rules are set by you guys. And if people are following the rules and they're working with city staff, there should be some predictability that their application is going to be approved. Secondly, the location, I think, is almost perfect. You've got two major thoroughways, Governor and Dodge. To the south of this location is the park. If there is ever a great location for a larger building, this is really it. As Mr. Quaharst says, this is a bided area. It had multiple irregular parcels that were all zoned differently. And after a lot of work, you know, the city's been working on this for, I don't know, decade, decades. And I really can't see a better location for a larger housing area. Iowa City is struggling mightily with affordable housing. There are many aspects to try to solve the affordable housing crisis. Not sure it's solvable, but to at least make an impact. One of those is supply. I'm not sure how by turning down the opportunity to add to the housing supply, we are addressing the affordable affordability of housing in Iowa City. Certainly, it's multi-pronged, but every chance we have to add to supply for a good project, we should really endorse that and jump on that. So those were my thoughts in addition to everything they said. And I always respect Mrs. Townsend. She's the voice of reason. Love her dearly. So I don't discount a thing that she says. So thank you.
I don't need to repeat what has already been said. I voted for this. And one of the, I also struggled with compatibility with the neighborhood. But the P&amp;Z added a request to put a barrier between the park and this building. So to me, that helped in terms of just making it less visible for people in the park.
I was pretty enthusiastic about this proposal. I think it meets the city's goals for adding housing. And, you know, we've done a lot of things in my years, my almost six years, five years. And P&amp;Z, the emphasis of infill. And, you know, we've passed, we've approved things and passed them on to you, about ADUs, all kinds of initiatives that we hope will expand the housing availability in Iowa City. And, you know, I don't need to repeat everything that everybody said. But I think, I mean, when this location came along, I thought, if not here, where? I mean, this is, in my opinion, an excellent site for a large housing unit. It is not next door to any single-family house, but it is in a very strategic location, convenient to school, park, grocery store, hardware store. I mean, an easy bike ride to downtown. I just think it's a very good project, and it would serve the city well. So my concern, as we were discussing on P&amp;Z, was a sidewalk on the Governor Street side that would have to come down to connect these buildings to the park. And, you know, that's not probably going to be a simple thing to do because that's a pretty steep ravine there along the park. But I would think that would be the city's responsibility. And, I mean, I'm a big sidewalk person, so.
And to follow up with Maggie said, we had a condition of S3 screening on the south side with the purpose of improving the aesthetics. So if people are in the park, they don't look at a big retaining wall that there would be vegetation there, sort of like park-like, looking to the north.
The other thing we talked about was the affordability of these projects that are coming in. And of course, affordable housing 10 to 20 years is not going to solve our problem. So I think we need to address that affordable housing piece before we talk about three units in the middle of an area that really is affordable, halfway affordable.
I voted for it as well. I think the density is appropriate for the site for all the reasons everyone said. I think I struggled with the orientation of the building that didn't front the road. I mean, it's good that it has walk-up units to help, you know, activate the sidewalk and pedestrian realm there. But I wish it fronted the road. But I think they just kind of squeezed it in there because it fit better that way, which doesn't feel like the right solution. But I think, you know, it hides the parking behind it. You know, for all the reasons everyone has said, it's the right place to add density in the city, I think. So, yeah.
And for the benefit of the public, on the issue of affordable housing and a requirement to have affordable units, that's only required in riverfront crossings and in annexation land. So we couldn't put that requirement on there because we have no ability to do that.
Yeah, I think if I can just say one additional thing on the affordable housing piece. You know, housing is expensive to build, and people need economic incentives to build it. And if we want to bring prices down, what we do is we increase supply. And so, you know, I think this is an excellent opportunity to do that. And even though it might not directly itself have affordable housing units, when you put more units on the market, you're going to lower rents for everybody. And that's a big part of why I supported the project.
Is it time for our questions?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I guess when I ask you, I know that only one person voted no for this. But do you have, like, some residents came and opposed this project? And if you do, what their fear was or what their opposition is? And how did you address it?
Well, as I stated, I've been doing this for 10 years. So at every meeting during the public hearings, literally everyone, there's people pro and con to a particular project. And I totally understand, being a resident of the south side, of feeling like everything's being pushed on us in other parts of the community don't have this. But the fact is, at least from planning and zoning's perspective, I believe, we always have to make the decision what's best for Iowa City. Sometimes, what some particular neighbors may not care for doesn't necessarily mean the project isn't best for the community. Because if you stop all development because a couple of people are not in favor of it, then nothing will happen. Because we're a large city and a very engaged populace. There will always be people for things and against things. So that's why planning and zoning is here, to listen to those people and make decisions based on the merits of the application, not on political considerations.
Yeah, but also, I think my question not been answered yet.
I think my memory is that the concerns of the people who were against it and who spoke at planning and zoning, the size of it was a huge part of that. They thought it was simply too big. And we, there seems to be a pretty equally divided conversation between people about the access to the park. You know, we were concerned that we didn't want the park to look like the yard or that it belonged to this development. And so we put in the screening part. But there are other people in the neighborhood who think it's silly to build that building and not have direct access to the park, which I think can be solved personally with the sidewalk that would come down. But the size of it seems to me, I mean, several people, several of the neighbors who spoke or people in the neighborhood said, we're not opposed to development. It is a bad-looking area, and it is prime location, but it just needs to be smaller than it is now. And I think there is also some positive effort in, you know, I understand that Mr. Barcalow has given you some other issues that you may be talking about. But I think getting the rezoning done would be a big piece of moving along and doing something positive with this parcel, whatever it is. Because it's been in this limbo. It's one of the reasons it looks the way it is because it's been in this limbo of, you know, it's been in state court, what, two times? And let's consolidate all of that, whether it's he who does the development, someone else who does the development, or the city who does the development. You're going to need to have the zoning to allow the development for more housing, which is what we feel and I think you feel is a priority for Iowa City.
Yeah. And I just want to go back to what you said. I agree with what you told me, like, you know, each time we have something, people will come and oppose it, and you've been there for a long time and all this. But also, and also you said earlier, the developer will come and kick all the boxes, and those rules has been done by us. And so if they kick all the boxes, we should go with them. But also, like, we have a rule for the neighborhood to come and object some stuff. And if that neighborhood have, they come protested, if they have enough signature, also that a policy of the city. And I think that's what is happening right now. So I'm not going to ignore all those people just because it is good for the whole city. We said that, we set also rules for the neighborhood, and they reach out that.
One way to be able to address neighborhood concerns is by adding conditions to the approval, to whatever the zoning is. And that way, I think people can rightly feel like they're heard.
Yes.
Because these conditions are added to help meet some of their concerns.
Hundred percent agree. Thank you.
So I, sorry, are you, can I?
I finished, yeah.
Okay. I guess it sounds as though the planning and zoning staff didn't have any objections to the RM 20 component of it. But the PUD, the actual specifics of the plan, is where there were concerns about traffic, about scale, and about that transition zone. And I was curious to know, from your perspective, like, you chose the screening to sort of reduce the impact of that tall retaining wall. Did you guys consider other remedies, like stair-stepped retaining walls or telling them they had to reduce the corner of the building? Or was it really, you guys felt limited? And I guess would you be concerned if council were to modify any of your conditions in subtle ways to address that very specific issue? issue?
Yes.
No, we didn't discuss that. Because our understanding was the retaining wall was right up to the parcel line or near it. And we were dressed, added that conditioning because one of the people that spoke at the public hearing was talking about being in the park and then viewing this fair wall.
Right.
And so addressing their concern. So what you said, all valid? No, we didn't discuss that.
Yeah.
Good question, yes.
And as far as traffic, the traffic component, which is your concern about that, do you see in your mind a condition that could be added to improve that? Like, make it very, very difficult to go the wrong way, or?
Well, signage helps.
Signage.
And a light would help at that crossing, for those that would be crossing and not looking. Iowa City people do that often.
Oh, I know.
They're on their phones and they don't look.
Two dangerous pairs of roads.
Exactly. The other thing is parking in that area. After you get these, well, two units, not three, I've been corrected. Where do people park when they come to visit those people that are now going to be in those units? I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I think it's a great idea. You've got schools there, you've got, you know, service stations there, you've got grocery stores, you've got all the things you need. You've got park. I mean, what else would you need to make a family happy, except safety in my concern?
So your biggest concern was related to the?
Safety.
Safety and walking out or driving out of that location?
Are these 80-year-olds driving and people walking across those streets?
Sure. Thank you.
For our commissioners relating to the public comments about these specific two buildings and kind of, yeah, the height and how visible they are, can you just speak to if you considered that and how the topography played into your decision-making, if it did?
Can I just mention there is, there are two or three units right there on the govern, on the Dodge Street side already. And they're two-story, not three-story. So you really don't even notice it unless you know that they're there. They kind of fit in with the residential buildings that are there. But to put two huge, well, an additional story, it's going to cause some, you know, difference in the way things look.
And we discussed that, and correct me because I don't remember all the conversation, but with that building, the larger building being angled as you're approaching northerly on Governor, then that angle would help break up that mass and scale issue.
Still a big building.
It's still a big building, but that, you know, trying to use some of the architectural tricks of reorienting the building to break up that scale, so it's not just flush along the parcel line, parallel to Governor Street.
Yeah, I think they did a nice job of addressing some of those considerations. And, you know, two additional things that I would mention. You know, one is currently that property is blighted. And so if we're talking about aesthetic concerns, you know, right now, it's a boarded up old building that's been abandoned for years and is, you know, a severe eyesore anytime you, you know, drive or walk by. And the other thing that I would note is that much of this property already does allow for multifamily development. It's just under very old antiquated zoning classifications that were imposed by a state court case. And so there's nothing that would prevent development of this property. It would just be done a pretty haphazard way and under some old requirements that I understand, you know, are pretty outdated and don't give the city the protections that are, you know, provided for in a modern zoning code. And so, you know, part of this is about determining whether this site is suitable for multifamily housing. But a lot of it is also just cleaning up, you know, some really messy old zoning classifications that were imposed by years of litigation.
Wondering if there's any more discussion?
Well, last question. I, my understanding, there is two houses that it will be demolished, right? Is that a renter houses? Or whether it's just like, you will own it and live on it, or this is a renter?
So we can probably ask staff to answer that.
Yeah, I, I think that they're presumed at this point in time to be rentals, I'm sure. Those issues all change, as I've also learned on five years on P and Z. What you think you're getting isn't what you're getting yet.
Just from the perspective of y'all, just like what a lot of people have already clarified, it seems like the, it's not the RM20 classification that a lot of the citizens are concerned about. It is the, the PUD. That's the right acronym, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's the PUD. And so people are, it seems like they're frustrated that not only is, that the zoning has to go through with the change in the zoning, but a specific plan has to go with it. And after the rezoning happens, and people really have zero recourse into what happens in their neighborhood in regards to not just, even if it was not even something opposed to the, the density or the 84 units, but just layout, architecture, certain small, specific things that they feel like they don't at this point, if it goes through, that they have no, they have no power in the situation. So, I mean, is there any advice you would give to these citizens? If this goes through, what can they do?
Nothing. My pet peeve is Myrtle, right there at Riverside and Myrtle. That huge building that's gone up, that I'm sure with the plans did not look like that when it came through P and Z. And where is all that traffic going to go once it comes out onto Riverside? I think that's, that's going to be a mess when it finally opens. You know the buildings I'm talking about?
I think so.
Riverside, Myrtle, there's a big park there.
Yeah.
And this building that is huge.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not sure how many units there are now in that building. But when the traffic starts to flow, I can't imagine what kind of traffic jams you're going to have to increase the traffic on Riverside. I think that, I lost my train of thought there.
I'm sorry.
What was I thinking?
Uh-oh.
Must not have been much.
About the planned development overlay?
That, that, part of the answer to citizens who bring those concerns is, you know, in Iowa City, over, in all the time I've lived here, which is almost 50 years, the trend has been to, we've always been a community that values citizen input, which is one of the great things about this city. And the city, through the council, and then through the staff, have put in place processes, procedures, you know, transparency things that make this a city where if any citizen who wants to know what's going on, they have an opportunity to know what's going on in this city, which I very much appreciate. But also, through your zoning ordinances and all the other things that you do, that's where you are protecting citizens. And they have to look at the zoning ordinance and say, this is what this zoning code allows. And as Scott pointed out, someone could go in there today and use the zoning that is in place on part of this property and build something that maybe nobody would like, but the zoning allows it. And so you are protecting neighborhoods and citizens through your zoning. But right now, again, the hodgepodge of things that are there, I'm not sure you're protecting much of anybody.
Yeah. And I, I think, I mean, I completely agree with the point that you're raising, that there's a difference between the zoning classification and then the actual, you know, PUD or plan for the site itself. And I think, you know, we're looking at zoning and whether this is an appropriate use of the property. And I think when it comes to, you know, precisely how you develop a property, once it's rezoned, I mean, we have, you know, a very detailed zoning code and building code for that. It regulates things like aesthetics, density, setbacks. And so, you know, that's where the protection is for people to make sure that these projects are suitable for their neighborhoods. And, you know, I think staff does a wonderful job of keeping those codes up to date and making sure that they make sense. But, you know, if there's an issue, then I think the remedy is to address it in the code rather than with regard to this particular site. Because like Commissioner Hench said, I think it's truly important that we apply the rules equally to everybody. And if you have a proposal for a site that meets zoning criteria and it meets the building code, then, you know, I think it should be approved as long as we're comfortable with the idea of that particular parcel being used for multifamily housing. And for reasons that we've discussed, I couldn't think of a better place to use for multifamily housing.
Well, I want to thank you commissioners for coming and spending your Tuesday afternoon with us. And really appreciate all the work that you all do. I know it's never easy because you have a lot before you. So thanks for coming today and sharing with council today.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel.
Appreciate it.
Great, thanks. All right.
Here's another agenda item.
Yeah, so we're going to have, yep, so we're going to do the comprehensive plan. That's right, you all are going to be here for that. So I'm going to invite staff up to start us on the comp plan. Yeah, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm just, Anne Russit with Neighborhood and Development Services. I'm just going to introduce Christopher Shires with Confluence Planning and Design, who's been helping us with our update. And he has a presentation for you all tonight.
Great. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, as well as planning commissioners. Thanks for not leaving. You're excited to leave. I'm going to do my darndest to be quick, but there's a lot of good information that I want to share. And I know you may have some questions for us. So again, I'm Christopher Shires, Principal with Confluence. Also have Jared Gilbranson here, who's going to speak a little bit as well tonight with WSP, our important partner on this project. You've seen me before. Many of you are on the steering committee. I'm going to give you a summary of the, our analysis review, but I do want to give you a little bit of a recap of where we're at on the process to update the comprehensive plan. But then we're going to get into a little bit on the physical profile of the community, some of our analysis on the community itself, and then a quick recap of where goes next. And of course, this is your meeting. So if you want to interrupt with questions, please feel free. If you want to wait till you're done, feel free. And also feel free to just follow up with any questions or comments, either to us directly or through your staff. And so with that, a little bit about this process, we do have this broken out into five phases. That first phase was our initial investigation and analysis. And we do, are benefited by a technical advisory committee, of which several of you are a member. So thank you for your time serving on that. But where we've gone through the existing analysis, making sure we understand the process we want to go through. So right now, we're in the middle of Phase Two, in the very important public engagement phase. And at the end of the presentation, I'll go through a little bit more detail of what we're working on. But right now, I want Jared to come up and give us a little bit on the transportation utility analysis.
Good afternoon. As Chris said, I'm Jared Gilbranson. I'm a transportation planner with WSP, and we're part of the Confluence team. We were looking at the complete multimodal transportation network. So I'm going to give you the very high level of a lot of in-depth analysis on different parts of that here. But first, physical profile of the city. I'm sure many of you have seen this map before, looking at the different land uses across the city. So predominantly, low-density residential in the yellow color there. Our commercial nodes in red, industrial areas in gray, and parkland in green. Something else we've noticed stands out is the predominance of, with the university, public land available in the, in the, in the city. For this next one, looking at auto traffic. So this map is showing us AADT, the annual average daily traffic volumes. So not shocking, IAD is seeing the highest volumes in the region, really between that Dodge exit and First Avenue. You know, it's hard to read the numbers there, but that's between 25 and 30,000 vehicles per day. And then the 218 corridor, as well as Highway Six and Highway One. And then Burlington Bridge, I've seen about 18,000 vehicles per day. So very important node to the multimodal transportation So safety is really important to us. So this is all crashes of all severity over a 10-year timeframe between 2014 and 2024. And we start to see some, some patterns and hotspots emerge here. And so, you know, we zoom in on the map to the outside, kind of zooms in on downtown, and we see three areas that stand out. The intersection of Highway Six and Riverside Drive, Riverside and the Benton to Highway One intersection. And then lastly, along Burlington, we see a big standout area around Gilbert and up to Clinton. So important spots for us to really pay attention to as we look forward, thinking about recommendations for the future. We looked at a lot of the bicycle and pedestrian amenities around the city. So this is a map of sidewalks existing in the area. This also gives sidewalk conditions. So green sidewalks in good condition, the orange in sidewalk in fair condition, and the red areas are sidewalks in poor condition. And purple is gaps in the system. So overall, a great network of sidewalk connectivity throughout the entire city. About 400 miles of sidewalks, with most streets having a sidewalk on one or both sides or a trail adjacent. And, you know, as in most cities, that sidewalk maintenance is usually borne by the adjacent property owner. We pulled out the same analysis, just looking at pedestrian and bicycle crashes. And so we see a lot of the same patterns there. One note that's different that stood out for us was by the University of Iowa Hospitals and Clinics, between Kinnick and Hawkins Drive, really popped as a place for numerous crashes with pedestrians and cyclists. We also see a high intensity there, again, on the entire Burlington corridor, really from the Iowa River up to Dodge Street. So we'll be, you know, keying in on that and looking at that a lot more closely as we keep, keep going on with the comp plan. I'm a public transit planner by background, so I really enjoyed looking at this part of it. So we looked at all the transit providers in the region, including Iowa City Transit, CamBus, and Coroville Transit as a, you know, a comprehensive network for fixed route and para-transit services within the region. So again, high level, we took a look at ridership trends over the last decade. And so, you know, in 2023, Iowa City Transit provided more than a million rides. A lot of that has to do, too, a great increase with the ZERFARE program that's been very popular here, helping to bring people back to transit. You can see in this trend line, too, the really dramatic impact that COVID had on transit ridership. You know, not unique to Iowa City, this is a very big national trend, and many transit providers working to come back from that, rehiring operators, and then just bringing people back to transit in general. So really great system for the whole region and for Iowa City. So great coverage there. And with that, I believe, I will hand things back to Chris for a look at the community profile. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. So a little bit on the community profile. As you may know, when we look at the past 100 years, Iowa City has had a, a strong and steady growth trend. And even when we focus in since 2000, over 25% or 21% population increase. And when we take that and we used various techniques to try to project, predict the population growth, it is, of course, an upward continued trend, really looking at a kind of an average result of almost a 95,000 population city in 2050. So some significant steady growth, everything stayed the same. And when we look at the community today, we have, you know, 37% being single person households in our household size, a lot of rest in that one and two, and then a much lower amount of four-person or plus households. Maybe not surprising with the impact of our university. When we look at, when we use the term tenure, if it's run or occupied or owner occupied, you're almost a 50-50 city, where it's half rental occupied, half owner occupied. Also, not a surprise for us. When we look at your income ranges, you're a very diverse community from an income standpoint. You have very large population of the lower earners, large population of the higher earners, and then that kind of that solid middle earners as well. Again, not a surprise for us, considering the impact of our students. When we look at an educational attainment, this is where you really stand out. One of those really fun facts, nearly 100% of adults, so 96.8%, have a high school diploma or equivalent, and then 60% of the population at least having a bachelor's degree. And then this is amazing one, that 30% having a grad degree or higher. When we look at the housing makeup, you know, about 33-plus thousand housing units, so quite a number to go with your population size, and then running around that 9% vacancy rate. rate, which is a pretty healthy and typical number that does ebb and flow and change over time. When we look a little bit more on that physical characteristic of year built, you have quite that range. There are older homes in the community, and older homes do need a little more love and attention, but you also have that, that strong newer, 2,000 and newer homes, or homes built in the 80s and, and 90s. Number of bedrooms, we don't always see the higher number of bedrooms, the three and four-bedroom units, so it's nice to see that. That is a desired housing type that's sometimes hard for the marketplace to fulfill. When we look at home values, and I'm gonna put a big caveat on this, this is the latest available data from this data source, 2023. I bet if we were able to pull this number accurately today, we'd almost slide all those home values down one whole bar. We've seen great price inflation on housing, not a shock to probably anybody in the room. And when we look at your median owner-occupied home value of 220, almost $275,000, that is a significant number. And so we do think housing is probably one of the most criticals or, or more critical issues that we think the comprehensive plan should focus in on and address. Along that same line, when we do the calculations to, to consider your residents on being cost burdened when it comes to housing, and the definition of cost burdened is if you're spending more than 30% of your income on your housing. That's either your mortgage, your rent, utility payments, things related to your living arrangement, that our owner-occupies, which we tend to see less burdened, about 21% are cost burdened. And then on your renter-occupied, almost 62% of the population is considered cost burdened. Now, a little bit of grain of salt there, your students do kind of tend to sway that number because they show lower incomes, but they sometimes have that family support to help them pay for rent. But this is an area of focus and, and attention that, that we think deserves further review. When we look at the makeup of housing stock itself, right now, you have a, a, a pretty solid mix, but we think there's some room for improvement and growth, and this will be something we'll continue to work with you. 40% is a traditional single-family detached home, about 20% is, sometimes we'll call it missing middle, it's the duplex, rowhouse, townhome property, and then the more traditional multifamily apartment at about 40%. Something that we'll want to consider, what is that appropriate mix for Iowa City going forward? So when we look to the future and think, gosh, what happens in 2050 when we're about 95,000 population? That's a, you know, more than 19,000 new residents, that's about 8,600 new households, and then thinking we, we've got to have some vacancy in there to cover the typical vacancy rate, that's about 9,000 new housing units that we'll need in the community just to house our growing population. So be thinking that's 364 new single-family homes, townhomes, rowhouses, duplexes, as well as apartments, every year to kind of stay status quo on the growth. And that doesn't necessarily even take care of when we sometimes lose structures due to age or even infill redevelopment. Want to switch gears a little bit on employment? And so some really interesting numbers here, probably no surprise, your two big sectors are, are healthcare and education, and then healthcare being actually rather volatile, especially when we were going through the Great Recession in that 2008 time period. And even if you can kind of tell, you can see the little bump we had with COVID starting in 2020, and then some tail off. And so some quite volatility, but some of the other categories are a little more stable. But still, that, that, that growth in jobs is always important. In fact, when we look since 2002 up to 2022, the latest available data sets for us, you can see that in blue, healthcare and social assistance are biggest growth category, as well as educational services. But then in the purple down below, we have lost jobs in information, as well as kind of that professional service, science, technical type of jobs. And I think there's a couple of employers that really kind of caused that in particular with their business change. However, it's still a lot of good news, you are a regional employment center. You are a net importer of jobs, and significantly, so you have about 38,000 people coming into the community to work, about almost 14,000 people that live every, or leave every day for work, that live here but work elsewhere. And then this really healthy 18,000 that live and work within the community. And we know that number changes over time, and somebody in the room should ask me, well, what about those people that work from home? This data set, we have to use the best available from the federal government, is a little bit dated, so it doesn't quite perfectly capture those work-from-homes. We're not sure exactly how they're going to change that over time. My guess, it depends on where they're actually receiving their paycheck. And so if they're periodically leaving town for where their office is locating, located, they're showing as a, a out commuting employee. Little bit of data on where some recent development is and kind of that vacancy rate. When we look at office, and so all these dots mean something. And so the larger the circle, in this case, the blue circle on the map, the bigger of an office center it is, or office square footage, the smaller, the less square footage. And then the darker blue, the newer construction. So you can see you've had a lot of varying size of office development, you know, over the last so many years throughout the area. The number I want to focus in on is that vacancy rate of about 11.5%. And this is reasonably fresh data, it's only a few months old, pulled from CoStar. That is important, but you're in, really in line with what a lot of communities are seeing. We have had such a change to the working environment that we do have a bit of a surplus of office on the marketplace. We will contrast that dramatically with industrial. And so same kind of map here, the larger the circle, the larger the amount of industrial square footage, building square footage, the darker the gray, the newer the construction. And so you can see you've had a significant amount of industrial construction, a lot of it on that Highway Six corridor heading out of town on your west side, but you have that low 3% vacancy rate, really showing that there is continued growth and demand in this. And then kind of a, a similar customer to that, the hybrid between industrial and retail or commercial, we call it flex development or flex industrial, a little smaller amount of square footage, but kind of a growing area. And you can see by the, the little circles on where they're occurring, some of it's a little closer into town, a lot more diversity on location, some bigger footprints, but a really, really low vacancy rate. So definitely showing a demand for that type of business space. We contrast that again with, in this case, retail, commercial retail. The larger the circle, the greater square footage of retail area, the darker the red, the newer the construction is, a really low vacancy rate. So one thing your retail marketplace is doing, is doing a good job of, of not overbuilding the market. However, this is showing, being such a low vacancy rate number, that there is demand. So that's something that, especially with local population growth, we would imagine there'd be continued local retail demand growth. And it's a nice spread through multiple areas in the community. However, when we kind of put everything together, you really start seeing some trends that you've had a lot of development focus kind of in the city core, in the downtown area. So for multiple factors and reasons. Okay, I was trying to go quick, so I hope I didn't go too quick. I'll talk a little bit about where you can find the much, much longer, lengthier presentation. But this is the fun part, the key takeaways. You have so many really great things going on in the community, you're a fun community to work in, that we're not trying to fix horrible problems, we're trying to make you even better. How do we get you to that next level? So let's talk about the key takeaways. You have a significant amount of publicly-owned land, not a surprise, something for us to consider. We do have the floodplain and steep slopes that kind of do inhibit some of the buildable areas, but it also makes the community interesting and attractive and pretty from a natural standpoint. You have great mobility and circulation, IAD is a big asset, strong pedestrian and bike network and connectivity today, but a big demand to do even more. I think you, you definitely hear that on a regular basis, we want more, we want more. You've had significant and steady population growth, you are, I should not skip down ahead, I was gonna say, and of course you are an employment center, but you have this young, diverse, and well-educated population. It's just this great entrepreneurial workforce that really the sky's the limit. You have a diverse housing mix today, but we need to have some honest conversations about that, that mix, and about really trying to push those other housing types to expand your housing needs, especially as we're running into scarcity on land availability. And then you have a lot of great development and redevelopment occurring within your city center, and again, I'll just harp on it again, this net importer of jobs being a, a regional employment center is a really big deal. So going forward, like I said, public engagement's begun. Before we draft anything or bring back any ideas or thoughts to the technical advisory committee, as well as use the commission and council members, we want to make sure we understand what's important to the community, what their values are, what their interests lie. And so there is a professional survey that will be going out to the randomized, randomly-selected households. We have a project website that has been launched, and there is additional information, as well as public engagement opportunities on it. And we've begun our series of community listening sessions. Soon we'll be reaching out to our community stakeholders and setting up some small group focus meetings. And then, of course, we'll have our neighborhood meetings, some other opportunity charrettes, special events, to get the word about, out about the process, as well as get input on the plan. And so specifically, next Monday, we'll be back to do our third listening session. It'll be at the Downtown Library, starting at 5:30. I do hope people will show up. It's gonna be an engaged, kind of a modified strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threat discussion with us facilitating, we're following our planner's emerging trends topics. And then, of course, there are some others. I want to leave you with the project website. And so you can get to this from the city's website, there's a little scan me code, if you really want to sit in, you can type in that URL as well. On this has our process, has all the information about the comprehensive plan, our public engagement, and then very importantly, the information that we've been sharing with the technical advisory committee. So the full version, the lengthy version of our presentation on the existing conditions analysis is available there, and so people can go through it today at their leisure, see what the slides say, and frankly, share back with us any questions or comments they may have. So with that, do you have any questions or comments for us?
I have one quick one. Can you go back about 12 slides to the community profile, future demand, market demand slide?
Oh, give me a little bit more. One of these?
Keep going, it's the housing goals.
Oh, oh, that one right there.
That one right here. I find this very informative, and I have a, I guess, a request, and it would be, I know our, our council has a strong desire to have goals and metrics to try to go after. This would be most helpful if it was presented as not just raw units, but raw units as a function of family side, and raw units as a function of income distribution.
Ah, yeah.
Just additionally, with that specific metric, does the, I think the way you presented is that this takes into account that future growth, does it take into account any shortage of supply that we currently have?
That is a great question. So the short answer is no, it does not take into account shortages today. And even, back to, to your comment, let's say we have a shortage in senior housing or a certain affordability index, which, based on the fact that our renters are very cost burdened, yes, we can say there is a shortage there, or there is a demand. And so, no, it is a raw number calculation. In fact, that'll be a part of one of the next steps, is for us to think through, what is that healthy mix? What do we want to gear ourselves towards? And frankly, I love this as an idea of being a specific target or goal for you as the, as the commission and elected body to consider.
I was wondering if you could go back to the slide that talked about vacancy in residential properties?
Hmm. Yes.
So do we have any information on what types of properties are vacant?
So this is where the data sets get a little bit rough. We can find that, get that information on multifamily housing much more readily. It's harder to get for single-family. That, those data sets are actually being developed and improving over time, some of the commercial providers. I, I, some of the information we had did not look like, it did not add up correctly. So we, we try to take a real critical eye before we share something with you, because these are not census counts, these are statistical estimates, in this case, from the Census Bureau, that's the ACS data. So I don't have with me tonight the breakdown between, say, multifamily and single-family, but that's something I hope in our final report we can give to you.
Yeah, and I was really thinking about specifically, because it says it's mainly rentals. Do you know what mainly means? Does that mean 9%? Or does that mean 8.5%? It's okay if we don't know.
That's where I don't have that number, but anecdotally, we would think the majority or the biggest percent holder of the vacancy is the multifamily, that it's the single-family that has the most pressure, and ha, because considering how long the housing houses stay on the market, it's short, that their vacancy rate is two or three, whereas the multifamily's in the nine, 10.
Okay.
That's also not unusual. That's why we're kind of predicting that and anticipating that. This is the data set we had, we weren't really comfortable with saying this is correct.
And included in that data set, is it, are you, is it also included the rents of those specific units? Like, is, are the vacancy rates mainly units that have this kind of rent, or this kind of rent, higher-low?
So that we do not have a data set that gets to that level of precision, and in fact, you're not the first one to ask that great question. So we're trying to see if we can figure out some other ways to come up with those numbers. I'm going to guess that vacancy rates increase as unit rates are higher. So a $2,000 a month apartment has a higher vacancy rate than a $800 apartment, no matter the size or bedroom, that that is a trend we more generally see, just because there's more demand for the affordable end than the higher end, if you will.
So you think it would be wise, as a city, to do whatever we can to not build any more high-cost units, or to let the market try to figure it out by itself and build higher market rate units? Sorry, I'm putting you on the spot here, but...
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you just that, that great, really careful-to-walk-the-line response, and I'm gonna do it in two parts. First, allow us first to hear from the community, do a little more stakeholder interviews and a little more analysis before we give you a very specific recommendation. Two, I am a fan of, and I do think that the, the data will bear this out, you need housing construction at all levels. You need affordable, you need middle, and you need high-end. And that frankly, as a community, you really need housing construction at, at all price points. We can't forget any sector of this. And so anything you can do to support that, the marketplace tends to handle the high-end stuff, it's the affordable stuff that either needs extra help or a subsidy.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just went to the website, thank you for giving us that information. This is incredibly technical, but I clicked on the follow button and it doesn't do anything.
Oh, okay, shoot, all right, we'll fix that.
Thank you. Is that to like sign up for email reminders? Okay.
That, that's it, exactly.
Look forward to that, thank you.
We will, we will, it is, it is new, and sometimes we don't quite find all the little button clicks that we'll get that fixed. Thank you for the warning.
All right, hearing nothing else, thank you so much.
Thank you.
It was very comprehensive. And thanks to P&amp;Z commissioners for joining us, thank you all so much.
You guys?
Enjoy the rest of this beautiful night. I would say to you, say to you, but I don't know where you're going to.
And I know staff is gonna come on back up. I will ask USG, I'm gonna ask USG to come to give us a report before we go to item number six. Oh, item five, before we go to item five. Yes. Yes.
We'd like to say hello.
One second. Yes. I won't have them moving around while you're up talking. All right, we're going to move on to item seven. We're going to invite University of Iowa student government up now for updates. Welcome.
Thank you. Can I hand these out to you guys?
Yes.
Pass them down, everybody?
Thank you. Thanks.
Sorry. I'll wait a quick second for you guys to get those papers. Hello, my name is Shafat. I'm with USG, and we have our wonderful external chief of staff here, Jillian, as well. So today, we are presenting SSR1, a resolution that was passed on April 29th, the second to last day of MENA American Heritage Month. And we are asking you guys to also pass this resolution. I think it would be called a proclamation for you. Yes. So this is denoting, recognizing April as MENA American Heritage Month. MENA means Middle East and North African. We're using MENA instead of Arab, because MENA is more inclusive. So MENA encompasses more cultural, ethnic, and linguistic identities. MENA Americans have large roots in the Midwest, specifically in Iowa. And I'm going to give you two examples, one of which is, and both of them are in Cedar Rapids, actually, so the Mother Mosque of America, and then also St. George Orthodox Church, which have both greatly shaped community life in Iowa. MENA Americans have enriched American society with their leadership, societal roles, and traditions. And April has been recognized annually by the federal government and Lynn County as a time to honor and celebrate MENA American heritage. So we ask of you guys to also do this. I know we passed, you guys passed one in April of 2023, and we would love you guys to pass it this year as well. We also had a question about if we could make it an annual thing, instead of just repassing it every year.
So I can connect with you outside of the meeting and just talk about the proclamations and the process. It is, the proclamations do go through the mayor. Yes. So we'll connect with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then, just a quick, we're just going to glance at the first two whereas statements, and we would like to suggest two amendments to those statements. So first, we have including but not limited to communities from countries in the MENA region, such as, sorry, we just have communities in the, countries in the MENA region, and then we don't list any countries there. So we would like to add all the countries in the MENA region, because there is a power with naming. And with naming all those countries, I won't list them all out for you, but it gives the power of humanization. So I will actually list them out for you. It's Algeria, Bahrain, Egypt, Iran, Iraq, occupied Palestinian territories, Jordan, Kuwait, Lebanon, Libya, Morocco, Oman, Qatar, Saudi Arabia, Israel, Malta, Syria, Tunisia, United Arab Emirates, Sudan, Djibouti, and Yemen. We didn't include Turkey in this, because they don't consider themselves as Middle Eastern or North African. So we would love for you guys to amend that first whereas statement. And then with the second whereas statement, we have a list of ethnicities there. And we would like to focus on the Arab in the subsection of that. So Arabs, parentheses, including Druze, Jews, Alawites, Maronites, and other Arab subgroups. So we currently have Jewish people listed separately, and Druze listed separately. But obviously, these are like the same people, subcategory of an ethnic group, so we just want to put those together. Those are the only two things. And yeah, do you guys have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other USG updates? I know it's finals.
Yeah, it lasts another year. It's great, we'll be back in the fall.
All right, well, wish you all the best with finals, and look forward to seeing those that are going to remain through the summer. But those that will go and come back this fall, safe travels. All right. We're going to move to our last agenda item, which is number five. And this is going to be 21 South Lynn Street. I'm going to turn it over to our city manager to get us started.
Wait one minute here, and then we'll get started.
We have two councilors leaving that will recuse themselves.
Great. Okay, mayor and council, we are back here talking about 21 South Lynn. It's been quite a journey to get to this point, and I appreciate all the time that you all have put in, and not only the public input phase and developing the RFP, but evaluating the three initial proposals that we've received. I also really want to continue to acknowledge all of the teams that have worked hard on submitting these proposals. It's no simple task to respond to an RFP like this, and it's not just time, but it's real financial investment and professional commitment as well. And we've been fortunate along this journey to have three great teams present. We'll fast forward to where we are tonight, and you've got a memo in your packet that describes kind of where we've, where we've come since your April 15th, 2025 work session. You recall that work session, that you requested a few clarifications from the two remaining development teams, those being Grand Rail and the Iceberg Salida team. Since that time, we have received a letter withdrawing, a withdrawal letter from Iceberg Salida, who are no longer wish to be in the consideration for this project, and it's best to let their letter speak for itself, and not to try to paraphrase their reasons for, for leaving. But want to, want to thank their team for their commitment. And as I mentioned in the memo, the nice thing is, is we happen to have great relationships with all of those team members, and they're all actively working on other projects in the community. So I feel good about being able to continue to work with them in different realms. But we do have one remaining team, that is the Grand Rail team. You have heard from representatives of Grand Rail a couple of times, including their partners with Urban Acres and OPN Architects. Staff feels very comfortable, and we would be very excited to move forward to the next stage with them. But this is an opportunity for you to discuss the clarifications that they provided you in your packet, and that, and their proposal as a whole, before we take that next step with them. As a reminder, the next step would be to work on the finer details of a purchase agreement for the property, and really taking where we're at from a concept into a final agreement with all of the details that you would expect to see. That next process will take several months, and will require a considerable amount of additional time from both their team and from city staff. And specifically, want to mention, you know, some of the work that will be involved with, with their team. As you move farther, you might remember some of these slides that we have provided you along the way. But as you move to each step of the process, the level of commitment and financial investment becomes more significant. So as we move forward, potentially with the Grand Rail team, they'll have to spend more money on design and feasibility and financing plans and all of those things. So we want to make sure that we fully understand your expectations for that next step. And I'll be happy to answer questions. I know they've, representatives from the, the team are also in the audience and can respond to questions you have about their proposal and the clarifications that they submitted.
Well, want to say thanks to, of course, both individuals that submitted their proposal. Want to say thanks to Iceberg for all of the work that they've done up until now, and respect your position at this time, understood your withdrawal as well. So wanted to at least express some gratitude for all of the work that you undertook to submit to the community and to the council, an opportunity for us. For Grand Rail, there's a few items that you had in your, in your April 29th memo. And I guess I will invite you up at this point, maybe someone to just maybe talk a little bit about anything that you want to highlight from that. But specifically, I'm more interested in the affordable housing component, the permanent affordability that you know, that you noted that the council is interested in. I understand that certainly you would have to find a partner, and that we have to wait to see who that will be. But I wanted to maybe have you just speak to some, some home dunk points that you know this is going to be shoo-in, but also identify some challenges with it being permanent affordability.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Mike Bales. I'm with Urban Acres and part of the Grand Rail team. In response directly to the affordable housing, I think the biggest thing that we want to hit home is we are flexible. I think there's a lot of ideas out there, and a lot of good ideas, but we want to bring stakeholders to the table. The city staff, Housing Trust Fund, Johnson County Affordable Housing. We've spoken to different people about different ideas, and what we really want to do is get people in a room and say, what does the city want? What does the city need? And how can we work to provide it? And I think all of that in the context of financial viability, you know, that, I think, has been the, the strength of our proposal from the beginning. I think personally, that's why we're the kind of standing here tonight, is that, you know, we really focused on presenting an RFP that we could work with, but we always wanted to, and have acknowledged throughout the process, that, that we're flexible. We're built to suit in terms of taking the project and trying to coalesce to different components. And as far as, you know, coming back to the original question about the permanent affordability, we, we look forward to working with the local stakeholders and coming up with a viable solution.
Great. And this is just council opportunity to make any comments on 21 South Lynn in general.
I suppose I was going to be talking about, or asking about the flexibility of the plan, which I really appreciate. Is there a, I know it says roughly between six to nine stories, just making sure that I'm correct on this.
Six to eight.
Six to eight, yeah, that's right. In terms of flexi, is that something that's going to remain consistent as the preferred scale of flexibility? Or, yeah?
And I guess I'll add to yours, if I, if I may, because it talks about flexibility, but at some point, we need to know what we're getting. Right? We need to know how many affordable units. So in your response, somehow, when we get to that place of we're making a transaction, we're going to want to make sure that we know what we're getting.
Correct. And before Mike jumps in, let me, let me just help you with maybe an illustrative example. If you recall, well, you wouldn't have recalled, because you all were not on the council for the Chauncey, which is the last time we went through this process. The initial proposal was for a 20-story building, and there were all kinds of different configurations of, you know, what kind of units, and hotel rooms, and all those things. Really, it's the next phase, when a lot of that gets flushed out. We're going to be working from staff to development team, hand in hand, to figure out what is the most viable and advantageous project for the, for the community. But you will absolutely see those details in that final purchase agreement. I would say if you feel very strongly, if you say, you know, six is where I'm at, I can't support this to go higher, that's great for us to know upfront. But we're working under the assumption that, that we're going to, we're going to collaboratively determine whether it's six, seven, or eight stories. That's, that's the workable range, based on the proposal, and you will see those details at a later stage. So if you feel strongly, I would suggest putting that on the record now. Otherwise, we consider that flexible, as, as some of those details come together.
I would say ditto.
All right. Yeah. And in terms of, not just flexibility in regards to, regards to height, but flexibility in regards to usage of, there's a couple proposals, and I'm wondering, especially since we heard about the kind of large vacancy rate we have for office building, like, like, what if, are, is stuff like that flexible to where we, like, if we say, we don't think we need this many in either version that you're talking about, and we would like more residential in that? Is that something that we, it's flexible?
We always looked at this RFP process as twofold. The first was, here are some identified wants, needs, and, and also make it financially viable. So we, we put a product together, you'll see from our first iteration till tonight, it hasn't substantially changed, because we did a lot of the upfront lifting and figuring out that we didn't feel a 13-story building or higher could work. So that was the first part of the RFP that we felt very good about, and have been very consistent. The, the second piece, I think, is what Mr. Fruin just kind of talked about, which is, you're selecting a preferred developer partner. Once we get in there, you know, our resources are going to be combined with, with yours in determining the final product. And we're, we're willing to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, specific to the, the office use with, I think the comp plan presentation was very timely with, with that question. I would, I would think, and the real estate professionals can correct me if I'm wrong, if there's identified office users at the time we're working on the details of that agreement, you're more likely to see office. I think it's highly unlikely at this time that there will be spec office, meaning that that the development will include office without a user identified upfront. That would be rare in the, in the office market. It wouldn't be as rare for the retail market, right? You can, you can spec retail and have more confidence that it will fill during the construction phase, but to spec office right now would be a lot more risky. Is that fair to say?
That's very fair to say.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Apologies for being late. I, family medical emergency, but I was listening in on the way here. Just wanted to echo everybody else's gratitude. As I was coming in, I heard sort of the question on height that had come up. I think, just so you know, for me, the height issue is one of whatever gets us the best combination of viability and affordable housing, so I have no problem with six, seven, or eight. So again, it's, it's more of what we get in those stories. It matters a lot more to me than the number of stories themselves, although obviously it seems like more stories would mean more in housing, so that seems like a little bit like a benefit there, but, but yeah, so. Was there any other question that I had missed when I was walking from my car to in the building that?
No.
Okay.
I think Mayor Protem had mentioned, you know, great to see affordable units a part of this. There's a huge need for three bedrooms, as we already know. Two bedrooms is great. One, maybe not so preferred, but there's a place for it all, as we heard from the comp plan. So would love to just keep in mind that we definitely need more three bedrooms as well. So I think the, the council really does- So I think the council really does need to kind of make some decisions here on, to give staff some direction on what's next and to kind of signal to the city where we're going with this. So we have one proposal before us and I think the real question is, is our comfort level at kind of say, let's keep going down this path with the staff and with the city with Grand Rail?
I'm happy to kick things off unless somebody else wants to. I kind of, up to this point, up until the last week or so with the new development, I felt like we had two really interesting and potentially very exciting proposals before us with the Iceberg, Salida, and the Grand Rail. And my take on that was going to be, it was going to be tough to choose between the two of them. And so certainly echoing what others said, completely understand the second group deciding to back out. And thank you so much for the work and effort and the influence you had on, all of the people sort of had on the entire process and what we're looking at now. I don't see a reason not to move forward since one of the two proposals that I thought was already exciting to me is still there. Like that doesn't seem like, you know, had we only started with one, I might have felt a little differently, but since we'd already narrowed it to two and, you know, I was going to have a tough time choosing between the two. I mean, I see us, you know, obviously contingent upon all the things that have to get negotiated, which are still to come in the future processes, I would be comfortable putting this on the agenda as a moving forward kind of a discussion. So that's just kind of my take on it. I'm obviously just one of us, so I don't know how everyone else is feeling.
Yeah, I agree with you, Sean, and I think Well said, that there's been a great opportunity to have consideration of a lot of different factors when we had the three and then two and now one proposal. So I'm comfortable moving forward with this one as well.
Yeah, and I would just like to say that, you know, like, the Grand Rail folks are saying is that this isn't a binding agreement on a certain project. So this is, provides us a chance to move forward and work with the team, which I'm happy to do. And I would rather, I'm just excited to see that land not just be fenced off barren land anymore. And I think the public would like to see that too. And so, yeah, I'm comfortable with it.
I just have a question, like, even if we move forward to discuss this, is there is still opportunity that we can change on the plan or request changing? Because I really have some reservations about affordable housing in this one and also the size of the, like, retail shop that they have, the businesses. And, yeah, those kind of things. I don't mind, like, you mean moving forward with it to see if it's going to work?
Yeah, and so it's just like, sorry, you can go.
Discuss it more, you know, and that's what you mean.
Well, at this point, typically what would happen would be that staff would negotiate in a manner that we feel is consistent with their proposal. So when you look at the scale of the building, the general architecture, the mix of uses, all of those things would be consistent, knowing that some may change a little bit, but you're not going to see a drastically different project come back. And we wouldn't plan additional council work session time to really talk about it until we had those details worked out. And that could be several months down the road before those are, before those are ready. So if there are aspects of the plan and the concept that you're not comfortable with or that you would like to see change in a, what I would say, a more substantial way, it'd be helpful to hear the council discuss that now. Otherwise, when it comes back to, you should expect to see something very, you know, very similar to what you're seeing here, including similar financial terms and mixes of uses. Like, on the, you mentioned the retail on the first floor, you know, it's currently shown as 6,300 square foot of entertainment space. But in their March presentation, they also showed a couple of variations on if there's not a user at that scale, they showed how they could do micro retail units and have more attainable retail spaces for small businesses. For example, if that was a priority for you and you said, we really want to make sure that we get some smaller retail spaces and 500 square feet or so, then that's great feedback now and that's something that we can absolutely work on. Otherwise, when we get together with the Grand Rail team, we being the staff, we would kind of lay everything out on the table and, you know, they would advise us on what the market outlook, you know, would be for leasing those types of units. And we would express kind of some of our priorities and we try to find that compromise position. Maybe it's not a compromise, maybe it's fully aligned, but that's kind of how that would work. So on that ground floor example that you gave Mayor Protem, that's a good one. I'm glad you brought that up. If micro retail or any particular use is truly a priority, this is a good time to express that.
Yeah.
I would support that too, the micro retail specifically, that that would be something that I'd be really interested in, kind of my take on the opportunities that would provide for the downtown district and also for entrepreneurs. So I think that would be, you know, as these things get worked through, I think I would agree with that being a priority, not wanting to come in and like, you know, with my slide rule and pencil and anything quite that drastic, but in terms of something that would be really attractive, I think that would be, I would agree with that.
I guess my question on that is, just for staff and for Grand Rail, are you thinking that you must see one with retail? Are you still with that flexibility of, as Jeff mentioned, if it's 6,300 square footage where there is a, you know, an entity that is going to occupy that space, but let's say they don't need 63, then yes, there's the fallback of if they don't need all of the space, then we can create some retail. I think that is the question that, at least for me in this moment, I need clarification on. Is it still flexible where it can, if it works out, to have retail? Or is it more, it must have retail space?
I want to see it must. This is a city land and we talking all the time about like a small entrepreneur who cannot find a space at the downtown Iowa City because it's expensive. And now we are reducing on the price. What are we getting out of that? That's really important to me. You know, if we give you something, we need something back. You know, I think if the land was, we're not getting the full price for the land, okay, what else? Are we, for the sake of the resident of the city, who already in the beginning pay for that, can we do something to, like, just fulfill our needs, like regarding maybe a small business? And also like buyback community where they don't get like space on the downtown area? I just feel like that's one of the things we want to do and this is our chance to use, like, you know, everything that we want to do, we can do it here if we can. Really, that's what I believe.
Yeah, and I totally, totally agree with you. I guess I just thought that it is already within kind of like the current proposal that there is an option one and an option two, one including like five units of, and one without. So it seems like we, down the line, even if we move forward with them, like we can, without putting in any more stipulations, we can still have that option? Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, I think right now, because there is option one and option two of anything within that option that we absolutely want to see, this is the time that we need to make sure that staff and Grand Rail know that from option one and option two, these are things that we absolutely want to see, because they may not be in both. So that's our time now, so that when staff and Grand Rail walk away, they know what the council has stated must be, must be presented to us.
And Jeff, you mentioned that we, maybe we are not going to see completely different building. Yeah, I agree. But height also is completely different building. If we said like, we want more heights and this, that's because that's going to be additional money and everything.
Yeah, I think at some point, the numbers that they've based their proposal on start to fall apart. So I would say you need to, with moving forward with this one, you really need to be locked into that six to eight range.
I think I'm almost, maybe not exactly, for me, it wouldn't necessarily at this point be a deal breaker one way or the other, but depending how it balances out with the other pieces, like the affordable housing piece and the other, the other pieces of the, you know, the viability and stuff, but it would be a strong preference. And, you know, as those things are being negotiated out, I would put myself as very close to Councilor Salie's position, but maybe not quite deal breaker, but real, real strong preference.
Yeah, that's fair enough. But I just mean like, because we asking for affordable housing, it wasn't a lot of affordable housing in this project to begin with, and I'm just thinking like more height maybe give more, you know, space to have affordable housing.
And I think that majority of councils on, we're on board with, we know we need more housing, we know we need more affordable housing, and we know that downtown, people who want affordable housing should not be excluded from downtown just because of the more expensive nature of real estate downtown. Affordable housing should be everywhere. And so I think, I don't want to speak for anybody, but I think all of us are on the same page with that, it seems like.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah.
And especially like a one bedroom, one bedroom, you know, yeah, we need one bedroom, but I think so maybe mostly two bedroom, because I really see that the people who really need affordable housing, mostly family, which is they cannot make end means and that's why they will be needing those kind of things. When I see like one bedroom, that could be like a couple or maybe, I guess, a one person, single person. So I would love to see between two and three more on that.
And the more people that live downtown, the more people, the more people are spending time downtown and that helps the businesses. And so that's been something that's been communicated to me by folks. So is it time right now for us, you know, if we say, I think it's reasonable to conclude to get as much out of this in terms of housing as we want, we would need to see it on one of, like, the higher end of, and is that something that we should give direction to now, higher end on story height?
Height, okay.
Yeah, higher end on story height, so like eight. So is that the type of direction we should be giving now? Or is that something that doesn't need to be addressed immediately?
As long as I know that you're comfortable going up to that eight, I think that's sufficient. I understand your priorities with the affordable housing piece. I wouldn't want to lock in if we don't really have to at this point, because there's a lot of variables that the team's going to have to inform us on, like, you know, what are the costs of those two additional stories? And are there some reasons and why actually going to seven or going to eight may not be advantageous that we're not thinking of right now? So as long as I know you're comfortable with eight and I know you really want to maximize the affordable housing impact that you have, I feel like we can take it from here and give it our best shot. And I think collaboratively, we can present you with a really attractive solution at the end.
I think I heard something too on my way in, perhaps it was the presenter, talking about now at this stage, sitting down with like Johnson County Affordable Housing Trust Fund, et cetera, et cetera, to really hammering out the best, most efficient and biggest impact mix of that. And so I'm also kind of excited to hear in a few months where that conversation went. And, you know, I'm optimistic that that's going to get us something that we're going to be excited about, continue to be excited about.
Yeah, and I think to, and this is reflected in their proposal, so this is a new, one of our, one of our primary goals here is to get housing in the hands of a mission-driven nonprofit. It doesn't mean that that has to be the only solution, but that would be our goal. I think that's been our goal, that ensures permanent affordability. And so bringing some of those stakeholders to the table to understand, you know, in this environment downtown, what are the types of units that you feel are most marketable or most needed? Are there off-site considerations that we should be considering? We should have all that input from those organizations that may end up being the owner of these units. And hopefully, when the time comes to present this to you with the agreement itself and all the details, those stakeholders can speak to their support for whatever we have come to agree upon.
I just want to weigh in on the micro retail question. Thanks for bringing that up, Mayor Protem. I do think, particularly with this part of the conversation that we've had about like the value of a unit and how for the same amount of investment, there could be affordability elsewhere, I just want to kind of pull in the commercial part to that as well. And I think with this proposal, given that there is not other subsidy asks, right, we're just kind of looking at that 1.5 million discount on the sale price of the land, I would encourage you to hear that, you know, we understand that something like the micro retail is, could be a different model than typically would be on, you know, a storefront on this kind of downtown street. And to just encourage you to be creative and know that we, you know, that that is a priority as far as how that may change things around, you know, for that first floor. So at least that's my feeling and input, that there is some priority for accessibility for small usable downtown commercial spaces of high quality that may not fit the typical Iowa City downtown kind of supply and demand structure, if that makes sense. So to keep having that conversation, even though we understand what you've informed us about how things pencil out.
And the flexibility even with that, because, you know, one of the designs, say, I think five, you know, four to five retail spots, well, depending on if there's another, well, there would be another operation on the same level, it may not have the availability for five anymore, it may be two. So that's where the flexibility come in and I think that's what staff and Grand Rail wants to hear from us right now, is kind of that general direction.
How many was proposed previously on the other?
So that, I'm gonna say five from...
Oh, how big is the five?
I'm not sure.
Each one?
Oh, the square footage. It looks like it's, the lowest is 260 and the highest is 410 square foot.
And I, and I think that's something we're talking with community partners about what could be viable, what could be needed, and, you know, making sure the conversations are happening with the experiences of like in the South District market and those kinds of things. I know there's a lot of lessons learned and can be learned and appreciate your collaboration on that.
Any other items we want to discuss and give direction before we send staff off? It sounds like the council is blessing moving forward with Grand Rail?
Yes.
Yes, all right. And if we're, if no other direction, want to again congratulate Grand Rail for the, at this point, you're going to be our partners moving forward. And again, I want to say huge thanks to Iceberg, Salida, for helping us through this journey, taking this journey with us, really appreciate all of your contributions. And I know many of you, as Jeff mentioned earlier, and we still plan to work with you all in the community on various other projects. So if there is nothing else, I want to make sure that Jeff, you're good to go. All right? If nothing else, we are going to be adjourned from our work session and we'll be back at 6:00 PM for our formal meeting.
Okay.
So, not sure.
Oh, these guys?
Yeah, it's a lot of names.
Oh.
So there's two different people except.
Right.
Missy Forbes.
And Regina.
Regina is a community member.
Okay.
These are the others, but Missy. I don't know if you guys say their first names.
Sure. Okay, if I can kind of have that as a crib?
Yeah.
And then I'll just.
Yeah, I'll pass.
Awesome.
You can just say, then Missy.
Sure.
She would've been back home.
Yeah. You feel sort of like naked without it?
Yeah.
I get quite, yeah.
Scared to do it.
Like when you leave your phone at home for the day or just like checking for it.
Exactly. Hate that.
I didn't everybody feel it and we had wanted.
All of that.
Or something.
Yes.
I really love your figure breaking rules.
Yeah, because then you'll see everyone.
You know, all we have one.
Okay, that's good.
All right, it is after, just after 6:00 PM on May 6, 2025, and I'm gonna call the City of Iowa City formal meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Harmson.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Select.
Yeah.
Teague.
Here.
Wyline.
Here.
Want to welcome all of you to your city hall, and to anyone that is joining us virtual, welcome as well. We're gonna move on to our proclamations, item two. Two A is Mental Health Awareness Month, and this is gonna be read by Councilor Burgess.
Whereas, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, or NAMI, is the nation's largest grassroots mental health organization dedicated to building better lives for the millions of Americans affected by mental illness. And whereas, the face of mental illness isn't some stranger, it is our coworkers, our neighbors, our friends, our families, and sometimes ourselves. And whereas, mental illness does not discriminate, it affects children, adults, and people of every ethnic, socioeconomic, religious, or political background. And whereas, one of five adults in the United States experiences a diagnosable mental disorder, and one in five youth age thirteen to eighteen experiences a severe mental disorder in a given year. And whereas, suicide is the second leading cause of death for America's youth ages fifteen to twenty-four, and the vast majority of those who die by suicide have a mental illness that is often undiagnosed or untreated. And whereas, half of all chronic mental illness begins by age fourteen, and three-quarters begins by age twenty-four. Therefore, treating cases early could address and reduce disability before mental illnesses become more severe. And whereas, NAMI Johnson County will hold its annual walk at 9:00 AM on Saturday, May 10th, that's this Saturday, at the Terry True Blood Recreation Area in Iowa City. The walk aims to inspire and initiate a community conversation about the impact that mental illness has on every part of our collective lives, from family systems to primary healthcare to the education system to the business community and beyond. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month, and urge all residents to increase the awareness and understanding of mental health and be informed of the treatment options available in our county for individuals with mental illness. And this proclamation today is being received by Mary Issa, NAMI of Johnson County's Executive Director.
I'm not Mary, but I am Joanna Sinwell. I'm President of the Board of Directors at NAMI here in Johnson County. Thank you for your warm welcome and your appreciation for what we do here, and allowing us to do a little promo of our walk on Saturday. So, please join us. I think you all should have a team. At nine o'clock, there'll be a band, there's lots of fun going on, so please come. I did want to point something out that you may not know about NAMI of Johnson County, and that is that we are held as leaders across the state for our peer services. We have a drop-in center down here on Gilbert, we have remote peer services offering, and now we have a peer at the hospital, the hospitalization program. So, please come on Saturday, help us raise funds, just like every nonprofit right now, our funding is in jeopardy, and this is gonna help us keep up these great services. So, thanks to all of you.
And thank you. To be is National Public Works Week, whereas Public Works, professionals of Iowa City Public Works Department focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to a sustainable and resilient community, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the City of Iowa City. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of our public work professionals who are responsible for maintaining, improving, and protecting our transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, building, uh, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our community members. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the community members and civic leaders to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in Iowa City. And whereas, the year of 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. The theme is People Purpose Presence. Now, therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th to May 24th, 2025, to be National Public Works Week in Iowa City, and urge all community members and civic organizations to recognize the substantial contributions which public work professionals make every day to protect our health, safety, comfort, and advancing quality of life for all. And receiving this proclamation is Ron Kanoki, our Public Works Director. I could've used the extra steps.
Good evening, Mayor Teague and council members. On behalf of more than 160 dedicated professionals across the Iowa City Public Works Department, thank you for this National Public Works Week proclamation and for your continued support. The skilled individuals in our engineering, equipment, resource management, streets, wastewater, and water divisions embody this year's National Public Works Week theme, People Purpose Presence. From tackling everyday challenges such as material shortages to responding swiftly to extreme weather or water main breaks, our team remains ready and committed to serving the community. This year, we will showcase the Iowa City Landfill and Recycling Center during an open house on Sunday, May 18th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. The address to that is 3900 Hebel Avenue Southwest. This event will feature a touch-of-truck display of city vehicles and equipment, educational activities, and refreshments for all. This open house will kick off National Public Works Week in Iowa City. We warmly invite you and all community members to join us as we celebrate the vital work of public works professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. To see is Older American Proclamation Month, and this is gonna be read by our very own Mayor Pro Tim Sala.
Thank you. Whereas Johnson County Livable Community for Successful Aging, seeking to cooperatively celebrate the lives and the benefit of old adults in the community throughout the county. And whereas, May is Older Americans Month, a time for us to recognize and honor the older adult of Iowa City and their influence on every facet of American society. And whereas, older Americans improve our communities through intergenerational relationship, community services, civic engagement, and many other activities. And whereas, Older Americans 2025's theme is Flip the Script on Aging, focusing on transforming how society perceives, talks about, and approaches aging. It is encouraging individuals and communities to telling stereotypes and misconceptions. And whereas, the City of Iowa City must ensure that older Americans have the resources and the support needed to stay involved in their communities, reflecting our commitment in inclusivity and connectedness. Now, therefore, I, Mrs. Sala, am in behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 to be Older Americans Month in the City of Iowa City, and urge all residents to celebrate the profounding positive impact of meaningful interaction and social connection with senior for the entire community. And here to accept is Haley from Johnson County Social Services and Cassley, Ambassador of Senior Center Commissioner.
Thank you so much, Mayor Teague, our council members, and the City of Iowa City for this incredibly meaningful recognition of May 2025 as Older Americans Month. I'm Haley Crabbe. I am a member of the Policy Board with Johnson County Livable Community for Successful Aging, which I can't believe I strung those together correctly. I usually mix them up in some way. I'm also joined by Trail of Johnson County and the Iowa City Senior Center. This, this year's theme is Flip the Script on Aging, so we're really working to challenge these outdated stereotypes around aging and older adults in our community. Instead, we want to highlight the strength, the wisdom, and the vibrancy that older adults bring to our community each and every day, whether it's through volunteering, mentoring, staying civically engaged. Their contributions help shape a more inclusive, connected, and compassionate community, which we need more than ever. The Policy Board is working hard to finish a community-wide survey of older adults to help inform our next strategic planning, and we look forward to sharing those results with the City Council. We thank you for your continued support and commitment to honoring and empowering older residents in Iowa City. I hope we can all take this opportunity to learn from, connect with, and celebrate older Americans who make our community stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last but not least proclamation is Provider Appreciation Day, read by Councilor Alter.
Whereas, quality early childhood education is a valuable investment in our children's future. And whereas, childcare workforce professionals play an important role in cultivating, supporting, and educating young children in warm, loving, and culturally competent environments at home and center-based settings to meet the needs of families. And whereas, Iowa City recognizes the childcare workforce as essential for our economy that allows families access to the care they needed so they can work. And whereas, by calling attention to the importance of quality childcare services for all children and families in our community, the Iowa City Childcare Workforce is working with four Cs, Community Coordinated Childcare, and other organizations statewide to enhance the quality and availability of such services. And whereas, the Iowa City City Council will join families and organizations nationwide in recognizing early care teachers and educators for their efforts in caring for the children of working parents and providing them with quality early childhood experiences. And whereas, Iowa City residents are encouraged to recognize the childcare workforce throughout the state for their dedication to providing quality early care and learning services, and for the important role that they play in our children's future. Now, therefore, I, Megan Alter, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim May 9th, 2025, to be Provider Appreciation Day in Iowa City, Iowa. And accepting is Missy Forbes with four Cs of Johnson County. She's the executive director. And Regina Johnson. Accepting also are Claire Bartelon, Kayla, Marissa, Scout, Gidget, Lily, and Journey. I don't know if they made the journey, but our congratulations are to all of them.
Our crew of providers dropped like flies a little bit, but I would like to thank the City Council for recognizing May 9th as Provider Appreciation Day. Childcare is the foundation upon which all other industry rely, and the teachers that choose to work in this field are remarkable individuals. The work is hard, and the profession often goes unrecognized in meaningful ways, which is why recognizing the childcare workforce on this day is so incredibly important to me. I asked my friends from Loving Arms, and there is one here now that remains, or there is some back there too waving, for being, to be, in being recognized for the work that they do. This project, program in particular, has seen some trying situations over the past six months. They're currently in the process of transitioning their program into the Reach for Your Potentials Future Center, and so I wanted to be sure to recognize them, as I know that they have often felt a little unforgotten in some of the processes of the transition. These teachers are representatives of a cross-section of all the teachers who participate in the Wage Enhancement Program, which the city generously funds. And to help, the reason why you do that is to help raise the wages of the childcare workforce, which is the lowest-paid profession in the state of Iowa. By your participation in its funding, you're demonstrating the importance of this work, and I thank you for being on the side of innovative ways to support this workforce. Seventy-six percent of parents in Johnson County work without the childcare workforce. They would be unable to do so. A day without childcare would have an insurmountable impact on our city's economy. Again, on behalf of four Cs, I thank you for recognizing Provider Appreciation Day this week, and I thank these providers, these teachers, for the work that you all do for the youngest students and Iowa City residents. Thank you all.
Thank you. Now Regina Johnson, I invite you up to give some words as well.
So I can't top that. I didn't write anything. I didn't even plan to speak, but I do appreciate everyone for recognizing childcare providers. Some days, we have hard days, some days are easy. I started my daycare back in 2017 in Dubuque, Iowa. I moved here last year of August. It's been a little struggle to build my daycare, seeing that I was very known back in Dubuque, and I'm new here. But providers definitely need more recognition, because sometimes we don't feel as loved as like big daycares. So, this is my passion. I love working with kids, something I always wanted to do, and I'm very thankful that you guys have childcare providers appreciation day. It means a lot, and thank you for having me.
Thank you. The words were from the heart. It was perfect. Yes. All right, we're gonna move on to, I thank you all for coming for the proclamation. We're gonna move on to our consent agenda, items three through six. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Harmson.
All right, and anyone from the public like to address this, any item that is on our consent agenda? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion.
I just wanted to make note of item 6H, which is the Training Annex Project for the animal shelter. Just to extend, thank you to staff for working with the Friends of the Animal Center Shelter. I know some people who volunteer there, and they're very excited about this. It's gonna be really helpful all around for safety for the animals, as well as the volunteers and the staff who work with them, to have a common area that they can use as an annex, as well as additional space for training and whatnot. And I just, this is, I brought it out mainly because it's one of those things where it doesn't really go commented on, but these are little, yet big, things that help make our community better, and I know that the animal shelter is top-notch and wonderful, and it's, it's just a shout-out of appreciation for the
of appreciation for the work that's going on there.
All right. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Mo?
Yes.
Sola?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Y-line?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. We're on to item number seven, which is our community comment. This is an opportunity for anyone that wants to talk on a topic that is not on our agenda. And the council won't be able to engage with you because it's not properly noticed. But we're, we welcome everyone that wants to speak on an item that is not on our agenda to come up at this time. And please state your name and city you're from. There also is a sign-in right there. Or if you got a name sticker in the back, you can drop it in the basket. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
I'm Chris Lawrence. I'm from Iowa City for at least, I don't know, since 2006.
I'm Judy Foal. I've been in Iowa City about 40 years.
Welcome.
So she has me beat. I'm the current Chair of the Airport Commission. We wanted to give you an update on our annual report and what we've been up to. The airport's undertaken a number of projects in recent years that have enhanced safety. We've modernized infrastructure, and we've increased the utility of the airport. A lot of these projects have been funded by the bipartisan infrastructure law that most people are aware of, FAA grants, state DOT grants, and local matching funds, of course. So some of the projects we've undertaken recently, we did a realignment of our runway 1230, which include the installation of equipment that enhances safety during approach and landing. We've installed LED lighting on all of our runways. So aside from the rotating beacon that we have, that you probably see at night, all the surface lighting at the airport is now LED. So that really reduces our electricity consumption. And then most recently, we installed a solar array. It aligns really nicely with the city's climate goals. It certainly helps us on our operational budget. To give you an idea of how impactful that has been, between October and December of 2024, our average electricity bill was about $750 a month. And after the installation of the array, we're now averaging $165 a month. Honestly, that's about my house in the winter, if, you know, if I think about it. The impact of the budget's been immediate. It helps to ensure that we can continue to self-fund our operational budget. That's something that we're very proud of, that we've been doing since 2018. And we expect the solar array to save us somewhere around $10,000 per year. So that's, that's been really impactful. And that was funded with bipartisan infrastructure law funds. Events that have been happening at the airport. We continue to partner with outside groups to bring people to the airport. That's one of our strategic goals, bring people to their airport. We have the Optimus Club Fly-In Drive-In Pancake Breakfast every August. That draws a large crowd. EAA Young Eagles takes children up in airplane rides so they can experience aviation. Kids generally love airplanes. So it's a good way to get them involved. And then we also had a recent Ford Tri-Motor visit, plane from 1929, that the EAA brought out. They did flights. It helps support a great organization in the aviation community. And then we have a partnership with the Summer of the Arts Drive-In Movies that we do every year. Future stuff we're looking at doing? We're looking at an airport ramp expansion for additional parking, runway maintenance and preservation so we can protect the assets that we have. And we're also looking at terminal area redevelopment and opportunities there. So that's a highlight of what's been going out the airport. I invite all of you to come out. We can give you a tour. We can show you the airport. And I extend the invitation of the public as well.
Thank you both. We're not supposed to be clapping. I'm sorry. We're just listening.
It felt like a proclamation, huh?
Yes. They're commissioners. They were given a report. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from. You have up to three minutes.
Missy Forbes with Iowa City, and I'm the Executive Director at 4C's. If you remember earlier in January when I was here, my concern was keeping our 4C's Aid-to-Agency Funding static, contrary to what city staff had recommended. At that time, I felt comfortable with that number. But as we get closer to FY '26, and I've had the opportunity to look at my budget more closely, I know that that number won't be enough. And so I wanted to come back and talk about that a little bit. Since January, we've had a new staff member join 4C's. And exponentially, she has done a lot more in her short time at 4C's to really increase her workload in Iowa City alone. And these numbers are as of, since January, excuse me, we've had five times as many startups that she's interacted with. And those are services that we assist with, helping people start their own childcare programs. And we are, so we've had five times as many startups. We've had three times as much engagement with starting strong providers. And those are low-income individuals that are caring for low-income children that meet with us on a regular basis. Three Iowa City providers were in jeopardy of losing registration. But those programs were remained in standing with HHS because of Allison's hands-on intervention and triaging those situations so that those businesses could remain viable. In April alone, we've had seven providers reach out to 4C's to ask for assistance with writing grants, writing policies and procedures for their programs, and to help with marketing. This includes longstanding programs that we don't traditionally or that we haven't engaged with as much recently because they usually can roll on their own. These numbers don't include, or these are, don't include examples of some of the innovative program that we're getting ready to roll out. So without the funding allocation that I requested on behalf of 4C's, we would be unable to continue this forward momentum once our contract closes for our ARPA contract in the first quarter of FY '26. We're also unable to access CDBG funding. Once that runs out, our contract ends in May of 2026 with that. $2,000 for a program that supports childcare programs, the workforce, and students from birth isn't enough. 4C's has never been bold enough to ask for significant funding to continue our, continue our work. But I'm here today to tell you that if we don't, then we can't. And there's no other organization in Iowa City that is doing exactly what we do. It isn't duplicative. It's supplemental and supportive, and it's needed. Without it, 4C's can't continue to grow in Iowa City, and our work will become limited at a time when it's needed more than ever. Thank you.
Welcome.
My name is Mary Grabber, and I'm here to complain about my landlord, Keystone. I've been complaining to Keystone that the thermostat in my apartment does not work. And they keep telling me it does. I suffer all through the winter at temperatures from 90 to 100 degrees. Somehow, I cannot dial it down. I dialed it down past 55, as far as it will go. So they, so when I complained, my doctor told me to complain to Keystone about it and to get in touch with the city licenses inspection, housing inspection. So I complained, and they turned the heat off. Now, I live in a basement apartment. It's always cold. It's always cool. And plus, the front's in the shade. And when I get up in the day, in the morning, I have to depend on the sun to warm my apartment up. And the sun can only do but so much. So I complained to Stan, who's in charge of the Towncrest area. And he seems to be in cahoots with Keystone. I told him that the thermostat doesn't work. So they, he came in, I suppose, with this plumber. And this plumber measures the party, heat on the party wall at 75 degrees. Now, if I was a rat living in the wall, hey, I'd be living fine. But I'm freezing all night, and I'm freezing in the morning. I know summer is coming, but I need some heat, and I need a new thermostat. You just can't deny me that it doesn't work when I'm there. You know, sometimes 24 hours. You know, if I, I'll just go out for my medical appointments and so forth. But Keystone has changed. I don't know if they want to be slum landlords or what. But I complained to them, and they send that plumber. And I'm telling you, that plumber is not fit to put a tarp seat on. And when I, he, every time he fixes something, I have to call the maintenance, and they come and fix it. So the plumber, he doesn't know anything about heating. He just knows that he's a plumber, I suppose. And I'm nursing my sink faucet because I don't want him to come and, and cause leaks in the kitchen. So Keystone is being unfair to me. I've been there over 20 years. I always pay my rent. Only time I missed a payment is when they didn't tell me their moves. I'm sending a check to the wrong address. So this, I need heat. I'm 82 years old. I need heat. I'm not talking about anything that's, you know, that's inappropriate for a landlord to do. He's supposed to supply the heat because that's in.
Thank you. And for the record, will you state what city you're from?
Oh, Iowa City. I've been here over, I don't know. I've been here since 1989.
And you can just throw that entire thing in the basket. You don't have to undo it.
Back, back here?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else who want to address any item that is not on our agenda at this time? Seeing no one else. I'm going to close the community comment period. We're moving on to items eight, which is Planning and Zoning Matters 8A is rezoning North Governor Street. Ordinance: conditionally rezoning approximately 5.49 acres of property located between North Dodge and North Governor Streets from medium-density, single-family residential zone, high-density, single-family residential zone, medium-density family, multifamily residential zone, and multifamily residential zone to high-density, single-family residential zone with a planned development overlay for approximately .17 acres, and to medium-density, multifamily residential zone with a planned development overlay for approximately 5.32 acres. We're going to continue the public hearing. And I know that the council and P&amp;Z met earlier today just to talk through some of the P&amp;Z rationale for how they voted. Wanted to just offer any opportunity for council to ask any questions to our staff at this time before we move on to public comment.
At our last meeting, I had asked a question about if we could, as counselors, add any non-substantive changes. And at that point, it was a little unclear if we could, now that we've had our consult with P&amp;Z and understand what they thought and they said. Do we have any flexibility to add anything to the, to the plan that's before us?
Excuse me. If you did, I think you would probably have to go back to planning and zoning, particularly if they haven't discussed it. Planning and zoning, for example, one of the things that came up at the work session was a discussion about tiered retaining walls and so forth, instead of a kind of large monolithic face. And they had indicated they had not talked about that. So that's the kind of thing that probably would be appropriate to go back to planning and zoning. But in answer to your question, could you add it? Yes, but you would probably want to go through them first.
Hearing other questions from council. I did want to see if the applicant is here and if they wanted to make any comments at this time. Welcome.
Good evening. John Marner with MMS Consultants. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you again. I appreciated all the conversations and discussion at the work session earlier. I don't have anything else to add. I'm available to answer some of the questions that came up. If there are any from council, I'd be happy to answer, questions that came up. If there are any from council, I'd be happy to answer, speak to some of those if you would like me to.
Great. Thank you.
One thing. So not necessarily putting into the rezoning and the PUD, not necessarily putting something in there that is a requirement, but separately asking staff to look into other things. That's a different story, right?
Well, I mean, if council is to approve a rezoning, then you need to allow what's allowed in that zone. You know, oftentimes there have been concerns about a pretty picture being shown to council and they envisioned that this and this exactly is what's going to be built. And that isn't always the case. So unless it's a, you know, major site, I mean, don't get me wrong, there's staff review that goes on to make sure everything is compliant. But unless it's a major site plan that goes back to P and Z or something, then probably not.
I'm thinking more of considering things like if the council were to decide that we wanted to ask staff to look into, say, a trail that connects Happy Hollow Park to the development, or talking about staff looking to traffic control, or what's our authority there, it being a state highway and everything, and sidewalk talk, you know, just getting some solid numbers other than like, it'll be hard and it'll be expensive, or something like that. So we can actually put down, like, it will cost this to put the trail in. Here's different proposals. Here's how you could do it. Here's what we could do with the sidewalk. You know, it's, I feel like these are small things that are not, you know, unreasonable to, you know, ask. You know what I mean?
I do. In answer to your question, can you ask staff to look at that? I think the answer is yes, but there's a significant but. And that's that, you know, it's not a requirement that it'll be imposed unless it's part of the CZA. And as I mentioned with Counselor Mo, if you want to have a requirement in the CZA, then you would probably need to send it back to P and Z and have them weigh in on it.
You mean even as a small, as the sidewalk, have to go back to the?
Well, when you say it's small as a sidewalk, if you're talking about a sidewalk that connects Happy Hollow Park with that, if it's along North Governor, even that is a little challenging because of the topography, but it would be especially challenging to do it straight, so to speak. And, you know, obviously, we've got a lot of the engineers here, they could speak in greater detail than I could about that. So my point is, I'm not sure how big or large of a thing that would be. That might be a significant engineering challenge. Oh, maybe I misunderstood your question, Mayor Potem. Your question was whether you can just ask staff to look into those things?
Yeah, to look and adding, for example, sidewalk or do this.
Yes, staff can look into that. But again, I would just want to make sure, I don't want to set you folks up for disappointment that if it doesn't end up coming to fruition, it might be that they look into it, they ask for it, and they find that it's an engineering impossibility or practicality or something. So I just don't want to, yeah.
Fair enough.
So you think that adding a stipulation of a trail connecting the park to the development constitute a substantial change?
I think in this case it would. It wouldn't always, but given the topography that's present, I think it probably would.
Okay.
There may be, I may be misunderstanding a little bit or conflating different conversations in the past. It makes a big difference when whether the council is indicating you want that to be the responsibility of the applicant, then it needs to go through the P and Z channels. If outside of this rezoning, you want to direct staff to look at a sidewalk infill project through our capital improvement program, you can do that. That's what we've historically done in the past. We've used the example, I think, in one of the first meetings on this topic of Calder Park, in which the city is now constructing a trail to connect a park to a new subdivision. That was not the applicant's responsibility in that case. So it makes a difference in whether you're asking, whether you can impose that requirement upon the applicant, or if you're just asking staff to look at that and return to you at some point in the future with our evaluation of the feasibility and cost of that sidewalk.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, thank you very much. And it's hard for me to know, with something that possibly might cross the line into the private property of the development, if something at all touches the development, would that have to be part of the existing rezoning plan? Or could the city still engage in building that infrastructure?
We could still engage in building that infrastructure. We do that kind of thing with some frequency if we, you know, we, you authorize us to engage in property acquisition. Engineers let us know what we need in order for the project to go, and then we secure it.
I guess what I'm getting at is, I think people, you know, if this is going to move forward, I think that people fear that when they bring things up and then we say, yeah, we'll look into it, and then nothing comes to fruition and they don't have any updates. So what I'm asking is, is there a concrete way that we can make ourselves accountable and have some type of recheck-in at some point for the people who have brought up these concerns? And just putting something written down in concrete so they know that it's not something we're just going to forget about or ignore, if that makes sense?
Yeah, but I think normally, if, correct me if I'm wrong, normally like sidewalks, when new developing is happening, it's responsibility of the developer.
That's right, under greenfield development, that's right.
Yes. And I would love to, for the city to do things for the developer, if the developer are doing something for the residents, or like some kind of seeking. But not since we did not, we don't do that with many another developer, why should we do it for this?
For what it's worth, I believe that developer, I'm going to look at our planning staff, I think that they're installing sidewalk on North Governor as part of the project. That's a kind of akin, I think, Mayor Potem, to what you're describing.
There is one in Governor already?
There is not. They're installing.
It will be on the proposed project? That's what I'm asking.
Yes, it will, there will be a sidewalk installed for the length of the property as part of this project.
And then it.
But there is no one for the park.
Right. It terminates at a park at a steep thing. And I think what we're all getting at is, we would just love a design that somehow connects the park to the newly designed sidewalk. We would just like to say that that's a thing we expect. And that perhaps you, instead of doing a flared edge, exit, entrance, you separate entrance and exit on the North Dodge, so it becomes less difficult to go the wrong direction. Some very simple things that I would hope, I don't know, we're, again, I'm pushing up against what the limits of our ability to just get this done.
Outside of the rezoning context here, if you'd like staff to come back to you with those options, we can do so. It will take a little time. This is something that we would hire externally to do. So we would hire an external professional to come in and help us design, evaluate design options and cost out that sidewalk. We can do that. And certainly, you all can hold us accountable by placing that on a pending work session list or something like that. So you know that we will return to you with those options. And then you can decide if you, you know, if the cost or the sacrifice of trees or whatever the issue may be is worth building that sidewalk, that can be your call.
And you're saying like any major thing like retaining wall, or like, you know, reducing maybe the number of the apartment and everything, that's not something we can just say here. It'd have to go back to the planning and zoning.
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of your question, whether we can reduce the number of units.
Or doing like, building a retaining wall, or doing like, reducing the number of the apartment building, apartment on the unit, I mean, is this, all these changes, is not something like we can just say now, I'm vote for it, we'd have to go back to the planning and zoning?
I agree with you to the extent that we could not just say it now. The number of units in particular was a highly negotiated number. And so I don't think we have a lot of flexibility to alter that. And I'm sorry, I've forgotten the second part of your question.
Retaining wall?
Oh, the retaining wall. Now, they have a retaining wall. Are you thinking of a different one? Maybe?
They talked about layered.
Yeah, the fact that it's very tall and that they asked for R3 screening and we suggested maybe there's multiple mechanisms to improve that, or potentially making an amenity for the park. It just feels like there's an interface between a public property and a development that hasn't been made yet.
Right, I understand. Well, I would suggest one to two things. One, I see Mr. Marner is here, and I suspect he could perhaps in part at least answer the question as to why that other alternative may or may not work. And if you folks, after hearing that answer, feel like that's something you would want to insist on, then I think we'd be sending it back to P and Z.
I'd be happy to speak to that. So I do think there is an opportunity to provide tiered walls. We had a concept similar to that early on in the revision, or in the submittal and review process. There's some issues with the existing sanitary sewer easement that go through there. So we changed it to the single wall that you see on the current application. I do think there's an opportunity to revisit that in light of the discussion. And I think that's something we would be happy to do. I can't guarantee that it's 100% feasible. I can say that we would be happy to do that. And I actually mentioned that to the applicant prior to this, and he said, we'll try to figure something out with the retaining walls to address some of those concerns.
Which retaining wall are we talking about? Just on the south boundary?
Correct, the one on the south boundary, where the recommendation and the current CZA requires the S3 screening.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, if the stat, if city council wants to put some type of requirement on the zoning, it would almost 100% of the time have to go back to P and Z?
Yeah, because if, you know, the conditional zoning agreement has been signed. And so if you're talking about something that's enforceable, they would need to be included in the CZA, and that means they would need to go back.
So, but if the developer comes to y'all and says, just, they're on fruition, and just says, we want to do this stepped tiered thing and we do not think it's a substantial change, then would it be up to city staff to decide if that is a substantial change and if that needs to go back to rezoning?
I missed, in your hypothetical, was the developer agreeing to do the terrace?
The developer is proposing it.
Is proposing it? Oh. Well, I'd have to go back and look at the CZA again to remind myself as to, I remember there was the component of the screening, which was addressed in our work session, but I can't remember if there was anything about the structure of that. So I'm not sure I can answer that. Oh, sorry.
I guess I just want to try to give an indication about, you know, where a lot of the, a lot of the power resides, a lot of the power to make some type of changes if they are within the scope of feasibility. It seems like that is heavily geared towards the private developer, or whoever owns the land eventually, like they, yeah.
Well, certainly, we can't impose anything that the developers aren't willing to agree to. That said, you don't have to rezonate. And so that's why there's typically, especially with an OPD like this, there's usually a little more flexibility and, you know, a negotiation with staff to address neighbors' concerns, especially like the view from the park, that kind of thing. This is the result of a pretty long process in which planning staff have worked with the developers for quite some time.
Okay, now, if we decide on something that you said it'd have to go back to the planning and zoning, how that's going to happen? Like, yes, we say, okay, now we're going to take it to the planning and zoning, or we have to vote, or what, how we do that?
If you wanted to add a condition to the conditional zoning agreement, you would probably want to make an oral motion tonight to a council meeting in the future that gives enough time for staff to review council's proposal and for planning and zoning to weigh in at one of their meetings. They meet on the first and third Wednesdays of the month, typically. And so you'd want to kind of allow for all that time. But yes, I mean, this would be the time for you folks to let us know what it is that you would want to achieve.
Yeah, get you. Just for now, know the timeline. Thank you.
Any other questions by council to either staff or to the applicant representative? All right. We're going to open it up to anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time. If you are online, please raise your virtual hand, and I will acknowledge you. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from. And you have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Megan Volmater. I'm a resident of Iowa City, but I'm not a resident of the north side. So weigh my feedback accordingly. So watching this process play out has been actually really frustrating. There are a lot of, like, details that still need to be worked out. And there are a lot of valid concerns about the sidewalk ending in the middle of nowhere. Well, not really in the middle of nowhere, but at a place where it can't really be connected to other infrastructure like that. But I feel like there is, I couldn't help but think of a potential future where, especially regarding the traffic, where this development actually reduces the number of cars traveling on Dodge Street or Governor. Because I'm guessing if people are perceiving those streets as being very busy, when in fact their capacity is less than half of what it's, you know, max is, a lot of those people are probably traveling to their homes in other communities. And if they could live in Iowa City where they work, they might not be, they might not be leaving town or coming into town in the morning. Also, it's in a place where someone could walk to work conceivably. If they work downtown, very, very close, they might bike, whereas before they had to drive. So that was just something that really stuck out to me. Also, I live in an HOA that's sort of several multiplex buildings with 94 units of two bedrooms mostly, sometimes three. And the traffic is really not what you would think. It's pretty rare that I actually encounter another car coming into or out of the garage in our little, you know, driveway area. And I think that's probably not going to be as much of a concern, at least. And I live on like, the ragged edge of the east side. It's not walking distance to anywhere. So lots of drivers. Another thing that did stand out was that the pedestrians don't have a cross, because there's sidewalk on one side, but not on the side that the building is actually going to be on, that actually it might be wise to look at putting one of those pedestrian crossings with the like, yellow flashing lights where you press the button. I could totally see that being a concern. But I am fearful that we're going to let perfect be the enemy of good here. We could really use 84 units of any size, of any price range in the city. And I hope that this is approved in some form with some degree of density. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? If so, please raise your virtual hand, virtual hand online. If you're present, please raise your hand at this time. Please come up. Please state your name and city you're from.
Hi, Sharon DeGra, Iowa City. I have handouts again.
Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Mo.
Move by Mo, second by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Seven is zero. And we'll start her time at this juncture.
So the handout that I've passed out is one showing car crashes during 2014 to 2024 on the 900 block of Governor Street. And you can see where the building 911 North Governor Street is, is where the majority of the accidents have taken place. So in my mind, when I think about this area, I agree with everyone that there's a perfect area to develop and it should be redeveloped. But it's an island within Highway One, traveling south and Highway One, traveling north. Where the entrance exit to the development will be is at the very bottom of the hill. And people travel in excess, excessive speeds typically. Like, when I'm crossing to go over to Hickory Hill, it's usually 35 to 40 that people are, oh, you got an extra one. So that, my concern is about safety. And when I say that the number of apartments and cars going in and out is too much, this, the dots there are one way in which I can show you that while it looks great on paper, the context of actually living in the neighborhood and experiencing the car speeds, the crashes, noticing the lack of sidewalks, the lack of crosswalks, like the last person said, those are big deals that you shouldn't just pass this today and hope that those things fall into place. Maybe I'll pivot and also say that I saw the letter that was from Mr. Barcalow offering the properties for $9 million. That seems too high. But doing a tally of the assessed value of all those parcels, it comes to $4,640,000. So if the city were to entertain that, that seems reasonable. If you were to consider taking possession of the properties and if you were willing to sell for that price, I think that's probably about it. Thanks. And I hope that you don't vote in favor of it today, because I think there's more negotiation that you could do. And also, I viewed the part about a lawsuit as a threat. I think that you've got a lot on your side to vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. I'm Audrey Berwick from Iowa City. Having attended the P and Z consultation just earlier this afternoon, I just want to make one reflection about that, in case you were left with the impression that just a few neighbors had objected. As P and Z stated, I want to clarify that we had an absolutely resounding, overwhelming majority of eligible landowners petition against this rezoning. By my own calculation, it neared 40% of the adjacent landowners. And that's a, that's a very, very high tally, almost unheard of. And when you think about the fact that most of the land to the south was excluded from petitioning because that is Happy Hollow Park, and the north area is owned by developers, we achieved 40% of the landowners on both North Dodge Street and Governor Street within 200 feet of this proposed development. And so I just want to say that we're not just a few neighbors, but we are the city, those of us who objected. And then earlier this afternoon, but too late, I think to make it into your packets, I sent another letter signed by five, myself and four other neighbors. And this has to do with the critical slopes that are impacted by this development. And I just want to go over a little, a few parts of it because it's really too technical to digest on the spot. So I want to encourage you all to take a look at that letter. Because it has to do with zoning law and we do need to be following the law. Staff has stated they support this rezoning because it allows application of modern, the modern zoning ordinance, including parts of the ordinance that apply to environmentally sensitive features. In this case, the critical steep slopes and the grove of trees. Yet when you compare this proposal to the language of the zoning code, this plan clearly does not protect and minimize the disturbance of the environmentally sensitive features of the R3B zone property, or the additional land at 905 and 909 North Governor, which is not subject to the court ruling. The intent of the zoning law is to permit and define the reasonable use of properties that contain environmentally sensitive features. I encourage you to take a look at the ways in which this development is not consistent with zoning law. And that's detailed in the letter you would have just received. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you. And will you place your sticker in that basket, please? Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to give first consideration, please?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Harmsen.
All right, council discussion.
I'm just going to reiterate what P and Z had laid out, as well as a comment by Megan Volmer, that we have a need for housing stock of all kinds. We also got the presentation by our consultants about doing the comprehensive plan and that we're going to need 384 units per year to, and to be able to keep up with our anticipated growth. And this has, as far as location, 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 we had a conversation about it being prime. I fear very much that if we don't rezon this, we're going to let this continue. I, I fear very much that if we don't rezone this, we're going to let this continue to be a vacant lot or vacant building that has been here since I moved here in 1995. And this fits with the, our strategic plan for infill, density. We have the opportunity perhaps for affordable housing, and we also need all kinds of housing. This is near grocery store, it's near, it's on the bus line, it's near downtown, it's near an elementary school, it's near medical facilities, it's right next to a park. I do, I think that it makes sense as a complement to find out about the feasibility of what the city could do in terms of connectivity, you know, engineering wise and what have you. But that's not something that we need to hold up this rezoning in order to do that other. And I think absolutely transparency, accountability, let's look into it and find out the feasibility of it so that we can try and make this connection and to make this a, an even better thing. So anyway, I will be voting yes for the rezoning. I just, I don't see that this is something that we can pass up in, in that regard.
I think that what I heard from zoning and what I hear from you is the density is really not the primary concern of P&amp;Z and maybe not this council, but I'm curious to hear from everybody else. It's this, some of the very specifics of this proposal. And I think that the, the key for me is the fact that we have these R3B zones that we have little or no control over, that we could end up with really, really bad things with absolutely no control, no sidewalks, no storm sewers, no real restrictions on setbacks and screening. And I think that this is an opportunity to make that really bad zoning go away. And so I'm, I'm supportive of, of moving something forward. I just, right now, listening to P&amp;Z in my own notes, is I have three issues that I wish we could just subtly tweak, and I want to hear from the rest of you how important those are. And to me, that's that retaining wall, it's the sidewalk, and it's the, it's the, the sort of inflow-outflow traffic. Like, these seem to be simple things to me where you can, you know, when you turn out, you must go the correct direction, and when you turn in, you must be coming from the correct direction. And I, I also hear the statement of let's not let perfect be the, the enemy of the good. And so I'm interested to hear what my fellow councilors have to say about those, what I think are the three snags.
I can go ahead and jump in. I think the, the traffic flow, the, you know, that's kind of, in terms of like, you know, people live in apartments on one ways, so that doesn't, you know, I mean, they have to deal with that anyway. That's not a, that's not a new thing. In terms of, I think, you know, the, the amount of traffic and the fact that there's a lot of capacity, I think sometimes, and I'm trying to remember now, I feel like we've talked about this right after I got on council, and our, our traffic expert isn't in the room, but the idea that one of the things that slows people down is greater volume. Like if there's more, when there's fewer cars, people have a tendency to hit the gas because it's more wide open. And that is a problem, like, you know, I've, I've driven down North Dodge and stuff too, and I know there's that one spot there where there's that permanent, this is how fast you're going, and I think that does help. I see brake lights in front of me, and that reminds me to tap mine because you're coming down that hill. And so definitely, you know, getting people to slow down through there is, is, you know, that's, it's a well taken point. In terms of the sidewalks and stuff, I, before our last meeting, I hadn't been out to Happy Hollow Park since my kids have gotten a little bit older, so I hadn't been out there in a few years. So I went back and kind of walked through that property and, and kind of walked kind of up to the, the, the property in question. And one of the things I noticed was, and I, and I can hear, I, I hear what some staff had said about the sidewalk there that would be on Governor heading south there along that one edge of Happy Hollow Park, there is a very small piece of, I mean, I was, I was surprised, I'd forgotten how narrow that was and how steep it was, and then the woods that are there. So I could definitely, you know, I think, I, I wouldn't want to require a sidewalk there. I would be happy to be proven wrong that that's a bad place and that if our, you know, if we were to do something after that as a city with our infill program. But I think what intrigues me is the idea of a sidewalk that doesn't necessarily follow along the street right there, but sort of connects through sort of mid-property. So like when I was, if you're familiar with like where the, what is it, the pavilion, little shelter and stuff is, the grade there is much smaller, like the, the distance and the height there, it's, it's, there's still some there, there's a grade there, but it's not as extreme as it is along the, the roadway. And so again, I, I like the idea that city staff put forward about working with a developer to say, hey, can we connect something up through there, kind of like we've done. I was thinking of actually the, the project up on Rochester, I don't know if that's the same park that, that you were talking about earlier. But I'm, I'm hap, happy to do that and direct city staff to sort of look for options there and see which one really does look the best from an engineering standpoint and solve that outside of this, of this zoning process. So those are kind of my thoughts on, on those issues. And then I agree with, with the other things that you and Councilor Alter had said about the advantages of, of this project that's before us, noting some of the concerns are, can have some validity as well.
I'll get to your question, Josh, but I just want to kind of address the overall project and the rezoning first. Thank you to those residents who showed up, not just tonight, but to all the planning and zoning. And thank you, Megan, for noting how frustrating this is, because that is very true. This process is incredibly cumbersome and awkward and difficult. And as Oliver, you said, you know, a lot of the power and decision-making is sort of, you know, loaded in different places, and we're in a moment here where we're so much effort and so many conversations and so much negotiation has already occurred. And while we do have the authority to pause and send it back to planning and zoning, I think that getting this property used, to me, is the really primary concern. And before it was even said at the podium, I wrote down the phrase, "perfect enemy of the good?" Because I have seen in my time, both on council and as a resident in Iowa City, projects that die by a thousand cuts, you know, that by the time they get here, we have seven opinions with a lot of, you know, things that often are representing the hopes of the neighborhood or, you know, specific impacted property owners nearby. And those things are taken into account throughout the process. And so I, I'm also in favor of the rezoning now. I, I don't want to send it back for those three things to be conditions that you mentioned, Josh. I think, I also have walked the site, and I agree that there appears to maybe be opportunities to connect with the park that would be not right on that sidewalk that ends, but, but somewhere more, more in the middle. And I really do think, you know, a thing that's really difficult in this process is those who will have the chance to someday live there can't be in this room. They can't tell us what they would want, they can't tell us where they would work, they can't tell us how they would prefer to get from their home to their work, their school, their grocery store. And so I think it's really incumbent on us to listen to what we know to be true about the growth of our community that is continuing and all the benefits of this infill development.
I, I would like to just say that this, reflecting the words of Pena and Laura, this is, has been for me, an extraordinarily frustrating procedure because I feel like at every, and this is through nobody's fault, I'm not placing any blame anywhere or to any particular person in the city. Every step of the way, trying to get some type of addressment of not only the concerns but other community concerns, not just by the neighbors, but things that would be the overall benefit of the community coming from a great location like this. Every step of the way, the answer has been, no, 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 you can't do any of that, you can't, well, maybe try it this way, but no guarantees or anything. Things as simple as, I would just like to see a connecting trail to Happy Hollow Park. Well, we're going to have to do this, that, and the other thing. And again, that's no one's fault, in particular with the city, it's just how the laws are made. It's how the society that we live in clearly puts the, the interest of private property developers and landlords over the interests of people. And it just sucks to be caught in this, in this, in this process where no matter how much time I and all the other councilors have put into it, I feel like it's just been roadblock after roadblock after roadblock of trying to get some type of concession, or I don't know if concession is the right word. When we look at these types of things for rezoning, we are technically not councilors anymore, we're like little judges. I don't know if you would characterize it that way.
Judicial means we're little?
Yeah, I don't know. And so I remember first, you know, so we are not allowed to, you know, being able to compartmentalize these things in my mind. And this has nothing to do with my, what my decision will end up being, but we're not allowed to consider things like affordable housing, we're not allowed to consider other type of quality of life things. We just need to decide if this fits within the rules of the code. And it's been very frustrating for me. So what I would like to do is to try to come up with some type of way, not connected to the rezoning for this first consideration, to maybe make some type of formal direction to staff to look into some type of trail connection that leads through Happy Hollow Park, like what we've been discussing in the lower grade. I'm not sure procedurally what the best way to do that is, but for this first consideration, I would be willing to vote yes to go through that while, you know, there's still two other considerations, to just go through that and see what that process looks like.
So I think this would be more of a work session that I, that we would come back to, and it sounds like that, that maybe the two considerations, not the three, not the retainer wall, I don't think that that would be a council thing, that would be more of a developer thing and them getting back to us. But sidewalk as well as the in and out of cars, that would be something we can discuss at a work session.
Since this is a formal item, Mayor, I think it would probably be at a formal, be it the second reading, like Councilor Wine Line suggested. Now, perhaps when we were talking about sidewalk, we're talking about two different parts of the sidewalk. I'm aware that staff spent a good deal of time trying to figure out if there's a way to connect the sidewalk in the middle to the park, again, because of topography, again, because of all the trees, again, because of ADA requirements, they found it not to be practical. But staff can come back and give a more full outline of that if you would like, also addressing the traffic concerns, so that you folks have a better understanding about what's possible and what's not.
And my assumption is at that point, I mean, the, the representative for the developer has already said they would have conversations about the retainer wall, not that we can require that before the, the end, but we would be very interested in hearing about that.
But I think you said that's have, if we, even if the developer is the one who commented, I'm, I'm going to do that, is this means it'd have to go back to the planning and zoning again, or no?
If you're looking for something that's enforceable, then it would need to be part of the CZA, and so that would need to go back. If you're looking for, you know, ex, excuse me, explanation for why some of these things were not done differently, then that's something that staff can offer you, and, and so can the developers. But yes, if you want a change that's enforceable, it would need to be contained in a CZA.
And what, what consider enforceable and what's not from everything that we said now, that we would like to see?
Well, because there's a difference between what you would like to see as a council and what the developer is contractually obligated to do. That's what the conditional zoning agreement imposes requirements. They, it, it says essentially, we will rezone this property to what you're requesting, but only if you satisfy these, you know, four or five conditions. And so if we want it to be enforceable, then it needs to be contained there, otherwise we're just saying please, essentially.
If the developer came forward and said, yeah, we looked at this retaining wall, we'd like to do a little bit differently, given the OPD, what would need to happen in order for the city to allow that change? Or the flare of the driveway, like those, those changes? I'm looking at our.
Yeah, I am too.
Yeah, and if they can come, I think some things have changed outside of something that's been at council before.
Greetings.
Greetings.
Hello, hello, I ruined your microphone. Danielle Sitzman, Neighborhood and Development Services. So the question is a bit of a double edged sword. Once a rezoning is approved with an OPD plan, what can happen and what can't happen to that plan? It's a substantial change consideration that staff makes as well. So we, depending on the issue, could decide the thing that's being proposed isn't substantial and let them continue and have slight changes, or we could decide whatever they're proposing is substantial, and then they have to go back through a rezoning. So I think the example maybe we shared last time was Oak Knoll, out east of the city, had a site with an OPD, it had two buildings on it, they were under the maximum density on that site, they proposed another building. So on the one hand, the OPD said, this zoning district, that density is fine, but the plan showed two buildings, and so we said, nope, adding a third building is a substantial change, even though it's generally meeting the zoning, you need to go back and have this rezoned. So in the case of a retaining wall shifting from a one tier to several tiers, I don't know how many tiers at this point, it's kind of an engineering question.
Trying to make the sidewalk work.
Right, or the, or the sidewalk through the site or something like that. Generally, except for the fact that you all have discussed it at a great length, those would be probably minor changes and we wouldn't require rezoning. So it's a little bit of reading the room, reading the, how substantial it feels to the community, whether staff says it needs to go back for a rezoning or not. I mean, we could want all the things in the world about a retaining wall, but they're built to retain something and they have to physically hold up to the stresses of what they're retaining and be built that way. So that's kind of some physical limits on how a retaining wall can get designed and constructed. So I don't know those answers, I don't know in this case, I don't think the engineer knows this at that, today, whether they can tell you with certainty whether tiered walls feasible or not. The right in, or I guess it would be left in, left out, traffic driveway flares, that's a pretty simple pouring of concrete, that's not something that we would say needs to come back for rezoning to simply be traffic engineered appropriately for that turning maneuver, that'll be something that at-site plan engineering staff in the city would definitely look at and make sure is functionally correct.
And then the sidewalk.
The sidewalk, there's two parts of that sidewalk, you're talking about a sidewalk, either you're in the public right of way off-site, not on this developer's property, or a public sidewalk on the developer's site, some way to connect to the park. We did just, as staff, kind of discuss that as part of the review of this project, knowing that preservation of those trees in and around the park was probably of greater value than pedestrian connection. I mean, you're talking about changing a retaining wall so you don't have to see it from the park. Putting in a sidewalk through the site would probably remove a lot of those trees that are not protected trees, they're not part of a woodland sensitive area. So we thought minimizing the impact of the trees is more important than a sidewalk, a walkway through the site at this point. So I mean, there's always the option for a public sidewalk in our right of way in the future, if the city wants to take that on through a council-directed action, but the sidewalk was a complicated choice as well.
So in.
I don't know if that's.
In your professional opinion, can we, without affecting the zoning, or without, I mean, without having to go back to P&amp;Z, can we get like a 10-foot trail that connects this property with Happy Hollow Park?
I would say no. At this point, what, what you're seeing in the plans and what the CZA says are what you will get. If you want something else, if you want it to be binding, you have to be explicit about that and send it back to P&amp;Z and have it explicitly returned to you with that design or that condition.
But if we as a city decide we want to make that happen ourselves, not as a requirement for the.
After it's approved, the city has no leverage to tell a developer what to do with their property once they start developing it.
Okay, I guess I'm just a little bit confused on the property line, and I don't know.
So I think what you're asking is on the side of publicly owned property, if we can create a sidewalk.
That's our, the city's right of way, you can do any infrastructure project you want.
So I think that, is that your question? So the question.
On the public right of way, yeah.
Right, so the answer to the question is yes, at any point we can do that.
So.
You mean at any point, I'm sorry, Oliver.
Sorry, no, you go ahead.
Yeah, I, I mean, like in any point, the city, after this being approved and the developers start developing, it's still, if we want the city to connect the sidewalk to the park, the city can do that.
Right. On our, in, in the right of way, presuming as Jeff explained, that we have a engineering firm hired to scope that out and give you a cost estimate and you're willing to pay for. and give you a cost estimate and you're willing to pay for and have the impact of, whatever that means, yes, like any infrastructure project.
And let me ask you another question. If the, if this passes and I, my understanding, the developer is putting it for sale and somebody else bought it, are they required to do everything as the planning and zoning said?
They're required to do two things. One, they need to comply with all the rules of RM20 zone in this OP, well, OPD RM20 zone. Also, they would need to follow all the conditions in the conditional zoning agreement. Those are conditions that travel with the land, so to speak. They run with the land, I should say. So yes, any subsequent buyer of the property would have to meet all the same requirements that the current owner would.
And if I can add, there's a time limit. So if this owner doesn't act on this OPD plan, eventually the OPD plan times out and a new developer, if they bought it after that time had elapsed, would need to come back with a new OPD rezoning, with a new plan. They'd have the base zone, so the RM20 would still be where it is, but the, the building design would not, the layout that you're seeing as a site plan would not be still in effect.
And with that time?
Eighteen, sorry.
Anne Russ at Neighborhood and Development Services. This, the timeline that Danielle is talking about is for the preliminary OPD plan, which is part of this rezoning. That preliminary plan expires in 18 months. If the applicant moves forward with the final plat, which we've talked about, they'll probably be submitting a final OPD plan, and that kind of locks it in place at the time of approving the final. The final does not expire.
Does the final come back to us?
No, that's just an administrative review.
Thank you.
I just, I don't know. Is the council here interesting of doing the sidewalk in the future?
The public right of way? Sorry. The, the public right of way?
The one that connected to the...
The city, that we can do it without it being a part of the rezoning? Yeah, absolutely. I'm totally interested in that.
And also, this is one of my concern. I did not talk at all about this. So I, my concern also is the safety. I go there all the time. I saw one of the accidents. I, you know, like, know like how certain time everything will be like, it will be traffic really between, you know, the, the people are yielding to make a ride on Dodge Street, and the people are standing governors, because that's a street that doesn't have any like traffic light or anything. So it being, it being like really traffic jam there sometime. And, and also like thinking about just 80, like 85, right? 84 unit, 84 unit, how many people will be getting out like during that time? And I just can't imagine if just all those people have cars. So it will be really tough. And yeah, the retaining wall is a big piece for me. And I really just think like if we can reduce the amount of the apartment unit there, will be ideal, that's what I think.
What, this is something that I've struggled to get, not through anybody's fault, but maybe it's my, my fault that I'm not understanding correctly. But our authority when it comes to Governor's Street, when it comes to, let's say it was the council's, if it was the council's want to put a crosswalk right there that goes across the street with like a flashing yellow light, are we allowed to do that because it is a state highway technically? Or what would the process be?
Any modifications would have to be run through the Department of Transportation, the State Department of Transportation. But there are universal standards for where, and where crosswalks and different types of signage and alerts are appropriate and where they're not appropriate. And I would, I would have a very hard time believing a mid-block crosswalk in this exact location would ever be, would ever meet that criteria, would ever be approved by our transportation planners or the state transportation planners. Generally, particularly on this type of roadway, you're going to be, they're going to want to funnel you to a intersection and do the crosswalk at the intersection.
I do want to remind, I just want to mention that this was a very used building back in the day. So I was there when that building was highly utilized. And, you know, people entered and exited all the time. I do hear the concern, and I, maybe I'll just make my comments now. So the sidewalk, when it pertains to the park, that's something that the, you know, the council certainly can do in the future or at any point we want to kind of entertain that conversation. So the sidewalk, at least from the, the public right of way, is laid to rest for me. The retainer wall, as we just heard from staff, certainly, you know, design, you know, the way things look is very important, but also the functionality of it is also very critical. And so the retainer wall for me is something that I think will be inquired about. But at the end of the day, it sounds like it's going to be more of a structural requirement that the developers will have to, you know, move forward on. Although they heard from council, they heard from the public, and I, I think that they'll, you know, take that seriously and, and, you know, see what they can do. When it comes down to the cars leaving, you know, certainly there is safety concerns. And that's with any, 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 anything. Yes, this is turning onto a one-way. We would, we would hope that the people that move there would realize it's a one-way. And, you know, again, a sign of some type could go there to say, you know, one way to the left. So that in itself for me is, is a, is not as great of a concern. And I would tell you that there are a lot of buildings, as we heard earlier, that where there's a lot of folks gathered, where the, the traffic is not as great as it might sound when you have 90 units or 80 units. The traffic isn't that great. So I, I'll be supporting this. I do hear the concerns of the neighbors. I appreciate the concerns. But I do feel that council is hearing it, the developers are hearing it, and they are being looked into. And I do think that there are some real solutions that can happen as well as some things that if we had to live with them, they will be, I think, acceptable to live through. Everything won't be perfect, as we know, but I feel comfortable with this. We do need all types of housing, and this is a great spot. As we've heard from various people, that this is a great spot for higher density. And so I'll be supporting this.
I guess I would just say that my, my main concern when it comes to traffic is more of a pedestrian concern rather than a cars. Yeah, that's why I was, you know, thinking about that. So I, I mean, the only, the only thing that I am curious about is if there's anything that we can do right now to put some type of, rather than just kind of say like, yeah, we'll look into it next week, we promise, some type of like moving forward, some type of, we will be looking into either hire, either, you know, getting an estimate on a consultant or something like that when it comes to like the public right of way sidewalk. Is there anything we can do right now at this moment?
A majority of you, four of you can direct staff to do that and give us the timeframe that you expect it. Now, I tell you, if you, if you tell us to come back in two weeks, we won't be able to give you much, right? Our procurement process would take several weeks just to, just to get somebody onboarded. Typically what would happen, and this is what happened with the Calder Park example I give you, if this rezoning passes, we would place this in the budget next fall. So we would do a CIP plan. We would try to front-load this project in 2027-ish. You know, we're going to be about a year behind. But there's also no, no guarantee that this development's going to start the day after you, you know, proposed the rezoning. Obviously, it's listed for sale right now. So that's typically how it would work. If you feel like you need it faster than that, you've just got to communicate that you want this done as quickly as, as you do. And we will do our best to keep you apprised along the way. We can do that through information packet updates. We can schedule a work session. However you want to hold us accountable, we're happy to kind of fall in line.
Personally, I don't think it matters that the sidewalk gets built on the city right of way immediately. I think that the sidewalk that's being proposed needs to match up with something. It's not the sidewalk that goes to nowhere. And that whatever gets constructed is prepped for the city to add that sidewalk. And I would propose that we have some kind of proposal by the June 3 meeting, which would be the potential third reading for this.
Yeah.
Is that...
Well, I think we can...
To study the sidewalk, like just to say, how does the city sidewalk actually interface with this thing? Because I do not believe it probably connects at the point where this current sidewalk that's designed ends.
So you're seeing more of like kind of a feasibility, not an actual plan?
Really all we need is like some schematic design of like, how does this work? Or does it work? Because I don't see that current sidewalk where it stops at a cliff connecting to anything, ever.
Yeah, I'm going to look at our engineering staff and see if you guys want to offer any input, since this would be falling to you.
Good evening, Jason Havelston, engineer. I think the challenging part is going to be getting some survey and trying to get an idea of exactly what those slopes look like.
You have that survey data though, don't you, from this current proposal?
Well, it wouldn't be the full area. So, I mean, it's, we could take a look at it. I mean, you know, just about anything can be done. I think as Danielle mentioned, a lot of it's going to be what are the impacts? You know, you're likely looking at losing a significant amount of trees along Governor. You know, you're looking at, if not that, to try and minimize that. You're likely pushing it next to the road, which is less than ideal. So it's, you know, could you get something in there? You could. It's just, I don't know that it's going to be something that we're going to be really excited about. So I think that's going to be the trade-off we're looking at.
And the grading for the sidewalk on this site that the city doesn't own, when, and like when is the sidewalk there installed? And when does that, like where it would connect actually need to be determined?
So, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe that the sidewalk for the, the site would be done as part of the site work. Now, what that would connect to, that would have to be our project whenever that would be. Otherwise, it would basically be set up for a future connection, but it wouldn't connect to anything since there's nothing there existing to tie into.
And what I'm hearing from Josh is, we know there's challenges with the slopes and the trees. Is there a way to mitigate the likelihood that there never is a connection when this land is developed, which may not be for a few years?
Again, I mean, there's, there's the potential. You know, I mean, we could do a project to do that. I just, I don't know that it would be something that we would push just due to the, the impacts and the trade-offs there, that that would be something that we would naturally push to the top. If it's, you know, your direction, then we could do that. But I think it's going to be a challenging one. It's going to be a tough one to, just to fit in there, let alone not considering the impacts. But when you look at the impacts, it's, I'm guessing that's also not going to be super popular to some people.
So I think, just to kind of bring us to where we might be, you know, I, I think the reality is when there's people living on that property, after it's developed, however many years from now that is, when things are complete and people are living there, they're going to make their own pedestrian access to the park, through the park, through the trees, however that works. How does the city typically address that when we see, oh, there is a significant footpath through these woods that has, that is now impacting our park? Does that make any difference?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of that would probably be the sidewalk infill program is where we would normally do that. You know, we do tend to do the ones that either have high demand, high requests, or, you know, are fairly easy. You know, the more difficult ones tend to not be as done as often. A lot of times because that's, they're the ones that face pushback.
And then would we have an opportunity with the land that is undeveloped to this immediate west of the park, south of this little bit further west? So not, not just this portion, but the portion that would like it connect to Dodge Street? Can, I mean, this is hypothetical, but the city could consider the access north-south to the park if that develops?
So if I'm understanding correctly, basically connect, making some sort of connection to Dodge Street and having that be the connection?
Correct.
I don't recall what's there on Dodge Street. I think there's sidewalk along there. If not, we're, we have a Dodge Street project that would install facilities there that are, there's a gap. I believe they're there, but if there is a gap, we have an upcoming project that would get the sidewalk along Dodge Street. So that would probably be easier. And I say that without, you know, having it in front of me. But I think that would probably be an easier route, although, again, it would be that connection from the private property to Dodge Street would be the challenge.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry. So hypothetically, if we want to, if we love the idea of south of the development to make a trail that does not have to go along the highway, does not, or Governor does not have to go around Dodge, but we just want, it is technically on the development, could we as a city ask the developer, can we build a sidewalk there on your property to connect it with Happy Hollow Park?
Well, normally, normally when we deal with infrastructure, we're dealing with, you know, connecting publicly owned infrastructure to publicly owned infrastructure. Now, that said, and so you can see my concern that here, as I understand your hypothetical, you would be connecting a city park with a city sidewalk on city property to a private development, which would have sidewalk on the private development's property. Am I understanding your hypothetical correctly?
Yes, maybe?
The issue there is it's like a 30-foot or more drop, right? The current, John, the current retaining wall in that southern is how tall? Oh, okay.
Will you repeat that, please?
Yeah. John, can you speak in the microphone, please?
It ranges anywhere from five feet to 11 feet. If I may, just add a couple things relative to the, related to the sidewalk discussion. Obviously, we'd need to work with City of Iowa City Engineering, Public Works Department, the Engineering Department. I do think there's an opportunity to, there's already on the final plat, there's a proposed, I believe it's a public pedestrian easement along that side. So there might be an opportunity to work with engineering to, on the design of that sidewalk, to better facilitate, whether it meanders a little bit further to the west as it, as it approaches that south property line, just a little bit, enough to start to drop it down. That requires some different things from a, from a normal urban cross-section that slopes up a little bit to the sidewalk. It's obviously something we would have to discuss, whether maybe it slopes down at 2% to pick up some elevation and push it away. So there's, I think there's some things that could be done to try to, as we go into that final design process, the construction plans, to facilitate as best as possible council's desire, the public's desire, everybody's, you know, apparent desire to have that sidewalk connection along Governor to improve pedestrian safety, access all the things that we've discussed.
Thank you.
I'm not sure of this question before, but with a sidewalk bend, essentially, instead of sticking close to the street, bending it, you know, around the, the southern, the southeast building, would that be something that would require an amendment at some point in the future? Like, does that have to be, if it's not part of this, the thing that we're passing tonight, or that we're being asked to pass tonight, rather, if we want to do something different with that sidewalk layout in the future, is that just a, an amendment that would have to process that would get us there? Or are we locking in something that would keep us from doing that, or?
Well, we can't amend the CZA after you approve it, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I just mean like, you know, sometimes we request for like a zoning variance or something like when they, am I completely...
Well, I don't, maybe I'm not following, but I don't, I mean, once it's rezoned, council's work is done insofar as zoning.
I guess my question is, would we be accidentally preventing the sidewalk bend in the future with what's about before us right now?
Oh, by ensuring that it's built in the way it's designed presently?
Yes, thank you. That's what I'm, and if so, is there, because we don't even know we want to do that, right? we want to do that, right? It's just an idea that's been tossed around. So, you know, I don't want to accidentally shut the door on something that might be a workable idea. But, so that's why I'm asking, is there a process normally through this zoning? Because this doesn't usually come to us, something that's just kind of like, hey, we're going to move this sidewalk over, or change the shape by a few feet.
Again, I don't know if Danielle answered that for us, as far as the wiggle room that they have.
That's kind of what I'm getting at, thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, I think...
Was that, was that part of that answer, I guess?
But typically, in the wiggle room that they have, typically, that's an applicant coming and saying, the applicant would like to change things a little bit. What I'm hearing from you folks is that the city would like to change things a little bit.
I think what I'm getting at is if the city says, hey, we could meet you this way, and the applicant says, hey, we'd have to change our thing, can we do that, city? And we would probably want to agree with that. I just want to make sure that we have the ability to do that in the future.
Oh, yes.
That's, I guess, what I'm saying. We're not boxing ourselves in accidentally.
Yeah, I mean, I've got the wrong credentials for the engineering component of your question.
Yeah, no, no, I don't expect the engineering. I just mean, sort of like, the, if we decide cooperatively in the future that we want to change that, and the city says, we'll meet you then, wherever that joins up at the property line, we're not preventing that from happening in the future.
No, if both parties agree, then you are not preventing that.
All right, cool. That was my only concern. Thank you.
All right. So council, any other final comments?
So are we going to be trying to have the city get back to us by June 3, like Josh was suggesting about, was that your...
That was what I had suggested. I'd like to know what the Public Works Department thinks would take to get a schematic design to just...
Will you please use your mic?
Oh, I just think we need to know what the staff can do in that time between right now and June 3 to look at it.
I'd be agreeable to that.
So let me just play that out. So if there is a, the information comes to us by that meeting that says, yes, you can put a sidewalk there, but in order to, for the grades to match, you're going to have to take down 45 mature trees and have a retaining wall that's this big, and it could cost $900,000, we would just vote down the rezoning on the third reading? Like, that, that's the ultimate, like, option, right?
That's not where my mind went with that. I think if we have the conclusion that, I guess I don't...
I'm just wondering what the tying it to the rezoning is. Well, because for me, timing of that analysis is not urgent, because that, that, the sidewalk on this piece of property, if it's rezoned, isn't going to happen right away, and any connected sidewalk that the city does isn't going to happen right away. So I, that's, that's the only pushback that I have, is like, well, yes, if it lines up, but then, what do we do with that information when we receive it? I think my understanding from what Jeff was saying is, like, we need to be able to plan to put it in a CIP. But I don't think it's as urgent as tying it to the third reading of this.
Okay.
Yeah, makes sense.
I guess my only, my, sorry, I'll talk into the mic. My only thing was, just as a way of holding ourselves accountable to the residents who live there, that we are actually addressing this thing in a concrete manner, and not, like, for me, it's not tying it to the rezoning. It's just saying that, yes, we are going to do the work to see what we can do here. That's all I had in mind.
Then my question would just be, what's a reasonable timeframe for staff, so that they're not trading this out for other things?
Was that a question to them?
Yeah, that was a question for staff.
Well, you know, everything's priorities, right? The team here, the engineering team is probably managing close to 100 projects right now. So this is the busy season for them, right? Everything's getting started. They're out in the field. If this becomes a priority, something else doesn't. I'm not prepared to tell you what those impacts are. They're not drastic. But normally, what would happen is, we would budget for design dollars and the CIP. We would talk you through that when we review the budget again in January. Again, we wouldn't necessarily put that in year five, knowing that this project could move forward with development. We would try to front-load that in years two or three of that CIP. And along the way, we could check in with you about what those costs are. Now, that may not be acceptable to the, to the neighborhood, right? They may want to say, you know what, I don't believe you, city, you're not going to come back in a year. And if you all want to prioritize this, then whatever timeframe you give us, we'll give you the best information we can gather at the time. On June 3, we will not be able to give you a whole lot of information, other than maybe, you know, what it's going to cost to get the survey work done and the consultant contract procured. We could probably do some tree counting estimates, and, you know, I, what I don't want to happen is for us to just be guessing here in the public on what those impacts are, and either accused of overstating the impacts or understating the impacts when we come to build this thing. I'd rather have the precise information. So it's all a balancing act. How responsive do you want to be? And how much concrete information do you want to have to be able to continue this discussion?
For my part, before it goes to getting included into CIP as a proposed, you know, here's a piece of, here's another project that we want, I would like to know kind of impact and the lift of it. Like, what does it, how big is this? What are we talking about in terms of mature trees? So that in between, I would love to get that information in advance of it ending up being like, well, this is a proposed part line of the budget, right? So that's, that's my...
So it does sound like...
I don't want to just go forward, sorry.
So it does sound like, this discussion really doesn't, it won't be tied to this rezoning. And so if council is amendable, it sounds like, you know, we can give staff some direction on, yes, we want you to look into this and, you know, bring it back, you know, add it to the work session agenda, and then again, we can bring it back when we feel like we are ready for it. But it doesn't sound like we need to continue the conversation, because it's not attached to the rezoning, if people are amendable to that.
Yeah, and I think the accountability is us.
The accountability is us. It's not on the developer. It's, yes. Any other discussion on this topic? Roll call, please.
Just a reminder, because of the protest petition, six votes are required to advance. Sala. I'm sorry, I didn't hear your answer.
You called my...
I did call your name, yes.
No.
Teague?
Yes.
Y-line?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Motion passes, six to one. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved. Second.
Move by Bergus, second by Alter. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Seven to zero. 8B is rezoning portion of 691 East Foster Road. Ordinance conditionally rezoned approximately 0.06 acres for a portion of the property located at 691 East Foster Road, from high-density single-family residential zone with a planned development overlay to low-density single-family residential zone. This is the second consideration, and staff has requested, if someone can bring out material to read, staff has requested expedited action on this.
Do you want it? I can. So which one? This one?
Motion to waive. Second.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Move by Alter.
Second.
Second by Bergus. Any discussion? And actually, I guess we go to the public for this. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Say no one in public, say no one in person or online. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Y-line?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven to zero. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved. Second.
Move by Alter, second by Sala. Roll call, please.
Y-line?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passes, seven to zero. 8C, rezoning zoning code amendment related to the Form-based Code zones and standards. Ordinance amending Title 14 zoning code and Title 15 land subdivision to adjust standards, increase flexibility, and clarify language related to form-based zones and standards. This is the second consideration, and staff is requesting expedited action.
Back to that. All right.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Move by Alter.
Second. Sala.
Second by Sala. And anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. If you're present, please step forward. Say no one in person or online. Roll call, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Y-line?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven to zero. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved. Bergus. Second.
Second, Y-line?
Yeah.
All right, great. And roll call, please.
Bergus?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Y-line?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven to zero. We're on to item nine, regular formal agenda. 9A is Rundell Street Pump Station Vault Modifications Project. Resolution approved in project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Rundell Street Pump Station Vault Modification Project. Establishment amount of bid, security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome.
Aye. Ben from Engineering. I'm here to talk about the Rundell Street Pump Station Vault Modifications Project.
I'm not sure if you can pull that mic up closer, or if it needs to be turned up the volume.
How about that? Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
So this project is located at the intersection of Rundell and Center Street, kind of in the Longfellow neighborhood. It's one of about five stormwater pump stations that the city has. The other four are actually located sort of behind flood protection down along the Iowa River. But this, this pump station is actually located in a neighborhood, and it, it works all of the time. So whenever there's a rain event, this, this pump station turns on, and it keeps that intersection from flooding. We don't, I don't really know exactly why this was needed. I have a, a strong suspicion that they rerouted Ralston Creek back around 1910, when they installed a rail line in that area. It'd be interesting to hear if anybody would know more about that.
Can we do that? I'm sorry.
So, yeah, the existing pump station was built in 84. I don't know what was there before. It's got two vaults. The first vault handles most of the volume. It's got two five-horsepower pumps. Then the second vault has a larger, two larger pumps. They handle about 10,000 gallons per minute. Kind of a quick overview of the pump, existing pump station. So the red, the red square on the right are the two small submersible pumps, and there's a trash rack in there. Middle square is the larger pumps, and then way over on the left are the control panels and electrical work. This is kind of what it looks like from street view. You can see on the left is the vault with the submersible pumps. You can see it's causing an issue with the ADA ramps, hard to get the grades right. And then also, the hatches cause problems for snow removal for the property owner. And then the larger vault has the wood fence around it. It's my understanding that that property owner actually likes the fence there. It hides, it hides the electric motors that pop up out of the, out of the station. So that will remain. What we're proposing to do in this project is to rebuild the top of that vault, so that we can get ADA-compliant curb ramps installed. We're going to redo those two pumps, and then we're going to put in new control panels and do a little bit of flood-proofing, and then rebuild all of the, all of the curb ramps at the entire intersection. So the cost's a little over $400,000. Bid it here this month, and hopefully have it done this construction season, maybe with a little bit of cleanup next spring. That's all I got.
How often do those run?
Every time it rains.
Every time it rains. Even the smallest amount of rain in those are needed.
Yeah, the smaller, the two smaller submersible pumps will kick on. Larger events, the larger pumps will kick on.
What will that do for folks in the neighborhood walking around and whatnot? I mean, they'd be able to...
There will be detours when they, yeah, when they have to redo the curb ramps, but it shouldn't, shouldn't be too impactful.
How far would you have to zoom out to make this be a passive system instead of a pump system? I mean, is that a pretty epically large infrastructure project?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
Thank you for your honesty.
Yes.
Any other questions for Ben? Hearing none, thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. If you're present, please step forward. Saying no one. We're going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Bergus.
Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Y-line?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven to zero. Item number 9B, fiscal year '26, utility rates, public hearing. Ordinance amending Title III entitled "Finances, Taxation, and Fees." Chapter IV entitled "Schedule of Fees, Rates, Changes, Charges, Bonds, Fines, and Penalties." This is the second consideration. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve. Bergus?
Second.
Mo?
All right. And anyone from the public like to address this topic? Saying no one in person or online. Counsel discussion.
I don't know if this is something that should be brought up right now. I've been trying to rack my brain around a way to, you know, the state really doesn't like to give us progressive ways to get revenue. Every single, most of the avenues we have are pretty regressive in nature. And that includes the state not allowing for discrimination when it comes to increasing utility cost. And by them, discrimination means we, we can't make a law that says, if your house is worth this much money, you have to pay more, or something like that. So it has to be like an across-the-board, everybody pays the same percentage. Something that it seems like we can do, though, and I would just like to get this out in, out in the open, is, and what other cities around the country have done, is surcharge for exorbitant use of water. So, and I don't know if this is falling under the discrimination exemption, or prohibit, then prohibiting discrimination, but in other localities, they do stuff like, for non-residential water users. So it's usually like industrial, like mass water usage. And the reasoning they give is to encourage them to reduce water usage for climate purposes. And so if they exceed a certain amount of water, you add a surcharge onto however many X gallons. So I just wanted to put that out there as a potential option. Yeah, I'm not sure if this was the correct time to bring that up, but I just wanted to get it out there, because we're talking about increasing utility rates for everybody in Iowa City. That's a path we could research.
Any other comments about this from council?
I still would like to talk about the discount water for low-income people, if...
I think we have it on a pending work session.
Yeah. I just want to remind you guys.
I don't believe it's on a pending work session right now. There was a memo in your IP two weeks ago that gave some background and history. If you'd like it on a pending work session, you certainly, we certainly can put it on there, but it's not currently on there.
I think that's what we said last time. We're going to talk about it in a work session. Please, if you can, put it on the work session.
Yeah, but I really meant to do both, because educating the people, it's okay to educate the people, and after that, the discount will be less. For example, if we educate them and their bill now instead of two hundred is one hundred, the discount will be less, because fifteen percent from two hundred, not like the fifteen percent of one hundred. At the end of the day, we can do both, but the discount has nothing to do with the education, because if we apply this, not because I have a discount, I will be start using the water more. That's not really the idea, you know? It's not, people are not even know that, the people who need this discount, they are not watching us right now.
No, exactly.
They are not the one who are going to know what we are doing. I'm advocating for those people because I firsthand see how many people come and their water has been shut off. I give you an example where I contacted the city for people who being shut off for four days because they have nine hundred dollars. And, you know, and even I found out just recently, because I was looking for housing, and I, when I, and those people, they said, this is, there is a leaking, this is not us. And the city said, we give you discount for the leak is once, and landlord saying, no. All this kind of thing contribute to that, like, special family, because it was like a lot. But I recently visited the house because it's for sale, and in the disclosure, I found out there was leaking, and they fixed it. So those people was right when they being coming and say there is a leak in, the landlord is not fixing it, and it being for them hard, and, you know, just, you know, this is not maybe going to be the greatest example, but there is many other example where the water has been shut off. Maybe we can ask the city to bring, like, data about how many people their water are being shut up because they couldn't pay. That's not that you can't reach out to the community crisis center and ask how many people know more money, come and ask for that. If you don't believe me, they come to my organization too. So I really want to advocate for those people, because I feel like if the city agreeing to give discount, that discount is not working. It doesn't have any equity on this. So, and I want to see like an equity on the discount that we're going to provide. So, and it's not going to be a lot. We subsidize a lot thing. And, you know, if I start like looking at the thing that city subsidized it for business, for anything, it will be a lot. I think we can subsidize water for the four hundred family that they are enrolled. I don't know how many now, but I, last time, if I can remember correctly, it was four hundred.
So we'll put it on a future work session. All right. Any other comments? Roll call, please. Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Bergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Nine C Parking Enforcement in the Pedestrian Mall. Ordinance Amending Title IX Entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Chapter IV Entitled Parking Regulations. Section One Entitled Parking Prohibited in Specified Places to Prohibit Parking in City Plaza. And Chapter Nine Entitled Towing and Empowerment Procedures. Section Two Entitled Towing and Empowerment of Certain Illegally Parked Vehicles to Allow Towing of Vehicles Parked in City Plaza. This is the second consideration, and staff is requesting expedited action.
All righty. I move that the rule requiring the ordinance, that, I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Move by Alter.
Second.
Mo. Second by Mo. Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please. Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Bergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Y-line.
Roll call, please. Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Bergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Onto item number nine D, Twenty Twenty-Five Gold Bond Resolution. Resolution Directing Sale of Fourteen Million Five Hundred Thirty-Five Thousand General Bond Obligation Series Twenty Twenty-Five A. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Mo.
Second.
Alter.
All right, and welcome up staff at this time. Jaclyn.
Hello. Good evening all. Jaclyn Fleigle, Assistant Finance Director. We had our bond sales earlier today for our Twenty Twenty-Five GO bonds. Maggie Berger from Spear Financial, who is our municipal advisor, is online to kind of walk you through the results there.
Great. Welcome, Maggie.
Welcome. Thank you very much. I'm Maggie Berger with Spear Financial. We did have bids received today on the fourteen million five hundred and thirty-five thousand. As you can see, we had a great sale from that letter. We are recommending the low bid from Jeffries LLC out of New York, New York, at a true interest rate of three point three nine three six percent. This is a fantastic rate in today's market. As part of this, we did go ahead and do your Moody's rating, as we've done in the past. Moody's has reassigned and reaffirmed the triple A rating, which is the best rating that is available for the city of Iowa City. They talk about your strong economic base, that the University of Iowa sits here, plus the University of Iowa Hospitals and Clinic, which also have very strong ratings. We always talk about the one thing, too many drawdowns on fund balance. You know, if you start getting rid of cash for, let's say, operational purposes instead of capital purchases or capital improvements, that's always something that can change the rating. They talk about how you have a very healthy and strong fund balance. They talk about your governance being exceptional, where you, you know, have good, sound budgeting practices, and you're usually coming in better than anticipated in your budgets, which is very, very important to them. That report goes on for a couple of three pages. We also, again, I spoke a little bit, but you get a very high score on the governance portion. They pay real close attention to environmental, social, and government, governance. That G1 rating is as high as you can get. So again, they feel very confident in what the city is doing from a government standpoint. We did have multiple bids. A lot of these bidders, we had ten bids today, a lot of these bidders are bidders that we see on a regular basis for the city of Iowa City. Again, we are asking you to award to Jeffries LLC out of New York, New York. We've given the final debt service schedule at the end, and on June first, twenty thirty-two, and any date after that, these bonds would be callable, meaning you could refinance them to a lower interest rate if rates were lower at the time. Otherwise, you would be able to pay them off, but the call is at your option only, and that just means that if you do nothing and you just continue to pay, you would just pay them until maturity. I would answer any questions that you have.
This is a really fundamental question, but when we bond for fourteen million five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, how much does that end up being in cash for the city? Or in other words, is that number that we're publishing actually the amount of money that the city has to spend or the total amount of expenditure at the end of the rate as it matures?
Correct. So you're going to have just shy of the fourteen five thirty-five. So cost of issuance on this, and that includes Spear, that includes your bonding attorney, your rating agency, disclosure council, who works on the actual disclosure document, is about eighty-four thousand dollars. So again, you're going to be sitting somewhere in the, probably the fourteen million three hundred, or probably fourteen million four hundred and fifty thousand dollar range, is what you're going to have for actual proceeds to be spent on the multiple projects and purchases included in your capital improvements plan.
And then when our professional staff budgets, do we, you know, we pass a budget, do we, what rate do we assume?
We were assuming a five percent rate. That's what we've really been seeing, and that's what we saw today. We've been assuming a five percent rate. Nicole and I always have a conversation. She's pretty savvy in the market, so she completely understands. We assumed a five percent rate through all of your budgeting. That's what we saw today. Some of the rates were five percent with fours in the end, but overall, the five percent all the way down with the amount of premium that they were going to pay the city is what was the winning bid today.
I just wanted some clarification on some numbers here. Excuse me. So, I lost it. Let me go back to that other thing I was looking at. My apologies, everybody.
This one?
Yeah. So, for the fourteen million dollars five hundred thirty-five thousand, fourteen million five hundred thirty-five thousand dollars that we bonded for, we, at the end of the day, will be paying eighteen million dollars three hundred, eighteen million three hundred forty? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Three hundred principal, or?
Correct. That would be principal and interest. That would be the principal and interest if you maintained and held the bonds till maturity.
Okay. Um, is there, I was looking through, and I couldn't find some, is this including certain fees that are involved with these transactions?
Yes. So there's cost of issuance. So again, that would be about eighty-four, eighty-five thousand, and that is things like your bonding attorney, the fee that you pay for Spear Financial, all the professional fees that go along with getting the bonds in the market. They do all the legal paperwork. We do the financial. We have to have, we pay Moody's Rating Agency, we pay Moody's Investor Services a fee for preparing the rating for the city.
Okay. Um, and I think that's, the interest rate that we were paying, you said it was around five percent?
It is a five percent coupon all the way down, so every maturity has a five percent interest rate, yes.
Okay. This is, when I look at these things, it's where I'm confused. It says coupon, not necessarily.
Correct.
So I'm just trying to get some clarification and not assume anything. What was the interest rate that we were paying last year, if you remember?
You do have, it was a five percent as well.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all the questions I had.
Okay.
Maggie, this is Jeff. It might be helpful if you can just educate us a little bit on the premium and what the premium is and how that, how that premium is used to calculate the true interest rate that the low bids are, stuff.
That sounds good. So we've got, the winning bidder and all of the bidders actually gave you premiums, meaning what they're doing is saying we can resell the bonds in the market easily at a five percent interest rate. So that's that five percent coupon. But we know that the market, based on the true interest cost, which is what you are, what you're approving and what you're basing the low bid upon, that is what the industry standard is, the true interest cost probably needs to be somewhere in that three point three five to maybe three point five percent range. So to buy you down to that interest rate of three point three nine from the five percent coupons per maturity that they're giving you, they're giving you one million eighty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars in a premium. That is not principal that you repay. You are still borrowing the fourteen million five thirty-five, but you will get the one million eighty-two thousand. You did receive a premium last year as well. You actually got a little bit more of a premium last year. You received just around eight hundred thousand or a little bit more than that last year as well. That's really where the market has been recently, was with these four to five percent coupons with some sort of a premium to buy down that interest rate.
Thank you. I remember we talked about, you were trying to educate me, someone who hasn't been doing this, about the premiums and what that means. So that was very clarifying. Thank you. The, so the true interest that we are paying is two million, two million seven hundred twenty-two, around there, correct?
Correct. That's your, that's the gross interest that's being paid. The true interest is the three point eight million, which includes the one million dollars of premium.
Okay. I was just wondering, where does that money end up, the two million seven hundred thousand?
That, that goes to the investors who are buying these bonds. So the people that you, that are lending you the money, that is interest that you pay to them. Bonds are sold in a secondary market, so it could be sold to financial institutions, mutual fund companies. It could be individuals that are buying these. Bonds are sold in five thousand dollar increments. So out of fourteen million five hundred and thirty-five, there could be quite a lot of bondholders. And on each interest date, which are June one and December one dates, that's when they would receive their portion of the interest that you owe them.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Maggie? Hearing none. All right, we're going to go to the public. Anyone want to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion.
Just like to say thanks to the professional city staff for setting us up to borrow money as efficiently as we possibly can. Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you.
Roll call, please. Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Bergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague. Yes. Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number nine E, All Are Welcome in Iowa City. Resolution declaring all are welcome in Iowa City. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Mo.
Second.
Move by Mo, second by Saleh. And this is an item that the Human Rights Commission recommended to the council, recommended that we adopt during their February twenty twenty-five meeting, and it is before us today for consideration. We do have Commissioner Priest who will speak here in a second, but I did want to just remind us that the county did also pass a resolution, all are welcome, and then this is before us today for consideration, and I'll leave it at that for now, and we'll be able to come back and have some discussion. I'm going to open this up for public comment, and you'll be given three minutes. Welcome.
My name is Mark Priest. I'm gratefully serving a second term on the Human Rights Commission. Thank you for your confidence in me. The last time I was here with you, I talked about how Jeff and Eric were helpful to me in this resolution, and I say that because what I started with, you would never have approved. The county wouldn't have touched it. It was putting a target on your back. It was scary. So that's when I went to Rachel Zimmerman, and she helped me figure out how we could get this to the county supervisors, and it was approved. So Jeff and Eric, thank you for.
Bonds are sold in a secondary market, so it could be sold to financial institutions, mutual fund companies. It could be individuals that are buying these. Bonds are sold in five thousand dollar increments. So out of fourteen million five hundred and thirty-five, there could be quite a lot of bondholders. And on each interest date, which are June 1 and December 1 dates, that's when they would receive their portion of the interest that you owe them.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Maggie? Hearing none. All right, we're gonna go to the public. Anyone wanna address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion.
Just like to say thanks to the professional city staff for setting us up to borrow money as efficiently as we possibly can. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Y-line?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number nine E, all are welcome in Iowa City. Resolution declaring all are welcome in Iowa City. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Mo.
Second.
Move by Mo, second by Sala. And this is an item that the Human Rights Commission recommended to the council, recommended that we adopt during their February 2025 meeting, and it is before us today for consideration. We do have Commissioner Priest, who will speak here in a second. But I did wanna just remind us that the county did also pass a resolution, all are welcome. And then this is before us today for consideration, and I'll leave it at that for now, and we'll be able to come back and have some discussion. I'm gonna open this up for public comment, and you'll be given three minutes. Welcome.
My name is Mark Priest. I'm gratefully serving a second term on the Human Rights Commission. Thank you for your confidence in me. The last time I was here with you, I talked about how Jeff and Eric were helpful to me in this resolution. And I say that because what I started with, you would never have approved. The county wouldn't have touched it. It was putting a target on your back. It was scary. So that's when I went to Rachel Zimmerman, and she helped me figure out how we could get this to the county supervisors, and it was approved. So Jeff and Eric, thank you for sending up the red flag. And you have a resolution, I think, that's before you, that you can approve. Last time I talked to you about, um, I was not a Jew, I said nothing. When they came for me, there was no one left to speak. That's really very powerful in my life. My father-in-law is Bronze Star Purple Heart veteran, now deceased from World War II. What happened in World War II is devastating in my family. So it's just years after that that I was born, and it's in that legacy that I come to eager for this passage of this resolution. I also want you to know that we are living in a Destonian, Destonian Orwellian time, where we do doublespeak. Orwell noted, war is peace, freedom is slavery, ignorance is strength, in his book 1984. Now before us has been approved by the state of Iowa is the Religious Freedom Restoration Act, as if religious freedom had ever been taken away. It simply hasn't been taken away. It's been here all a while. But now we have to deal with, freedom is discrimination. So that's why we want to be firm about all are welcome, and that's what the resolution does. Two days after the Human Rights Commission advanced this to you, the legislature and the governor removed gender identity from the Civil Rights Act, Iowa Civil Rights Act. That's in the resolution, whereas number four, you'll have to decide if you wanna leave it in there or not. I'd like you to leave it there, even though it's no longer part of the Iowa Civil Rights Act. The Human Rights Commission has a statement against removing it, but I'm running out of time. Please approve this resolution. Defer to you as to what you wanna do with the language. Thanks very much again for allowing me to serve.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Yeah, Mark is from Iowa City. Welcome.
I'd like to just stop it. My name is Mary Gravina, I'm from Iowa City. And I see this sign, when I first came in, this sign. Racial. Thank you. It says racial equality and social justice. I think the word racial should be removed because with Elon Musk and his Musk rats running all through our government, redesigning it, and Trump, who does nothing but take advice from people who never know what they're talking about. So in other words, they can use this word racial against the city of Iowa City because they're picking at to destroying things. Equality, social justice, and human rights is enough because you know what it means. Equality, social justice, and human rights. So you have to be careful with words because this one word racial, this is what shocked me when I saw this sign and came racial. That's dangerous because DEI means racial and white women. Because people don't realize, they're, they're just reversing the, the, I'm, I'm become getting tongue-tied. Equal Rights Amendments and so on and so forth. So they wanna put white women out of the body politic, they're back in the kitchen. And racial, the blacks and the browns have already been taken out of the body politic. You know, when they go after DEI. You know what they're talking about, unless you just totally, I don't know, just brain dead. So why let them get you with that one little word, racial equality? You know what equality means? You know what racial means? So I'm just recommending that word be removed from your sign. I like the sign. You know, it's nice. But why set yourself up for what you know is coming? For Elon Musk and those Musk rats have shown us something. I've never seen the United States government like this. And I don't even know if we stole in the United States, they might have moved us to Mars. He's so interested in going to Mars, maybe we all been moved, you know? So that one word is dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, council discussion.
I just wanna thank the Human Rights Commission for getting this in front of us. And as to the question of what the Iowa Civil Rights Act says, as of now, when we would be passing this resolution, it does protect gender identity, and I think it's appropriate to leave it in.
Because it doesn't go in.
Into effect until July. I agree.
I agree. Yeah, I'm very comfortable as it stands. And thank you also.
Thanks.
I did just wanna read now the bottom of this resolution because I think it really does speak to the heart of this community. And it says, now therefore be a resolve by the City Council of Iowa City, Iowa, that one, the city of Iowa City is committed to promoting a unit, united vision where all are welcome in Iowa City, and further commits Iowa City to being a discrimination-free community. We recognize our responsibility to foster a community that actively works towards inclusivity, equity, and the protection of rights for all, even as we acknowledge the ongoing nature of this work. And item number two is be further resolved. The city of Iowa City encourages businesses, housing development, and landlords, nonprofit organizations, houses of worship, educational institutions, and neighborhood associations to unite in the message, all are welcome in Iowa City, Iowa, and declare themselves as a non, as a discrimination-free partner. And if this is approved, this will be passed and approved on this day of May 6, 2025. So this, to me, really does speak to the heart of this community, which I'm so happy, as many of, I know all of us are happy to be a part of.
Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Y-line?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. All right, thanks. We are on to item number 10, which is announcements of vacancies new. 10A is Public Art Advisory Committee, Art or Design Professional. One vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December 31, 2025. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, June 10, 2025. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
Go, Mo, Sala.
Second, Alter.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 11 is announcements of vacancies previous. 11A, Airport Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term. Community Police Review Board, two vacancies to fill a four-year term. Historic Preservation Commission at Large, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission Brown Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission Summit Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Housing and Community Development Commission, two vacancies to fill three-year terms. Library Board of Trustees, three vacancies to fill six-year terms. Planning and Zoning Commission, two vacancies to fill five-year terms. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, May 13, 2025. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Board of Appeals, HVAC Professional, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission Woodlawn Avenue, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. Now we are at item number 12, which is City Council information.
Just want to say that I got to join the mayor recently for a recognition for the staff, volunteers, and donors for the senior center. Was held out at True Blood, and was, was an amazing event, and highlighted some of the real accomplishments that, that that facility has made and the people that work in, volunteer in that facility have made. I got the chance to talk with several people, and one of the recurring themes was people that had lived lots of different places around, not just the state, but around the country, and said with unprompted that this was the best senior center that they had ever had the pleasure of, of interacting with, and they were just so happy to have that as something that was helping them, you know, in their, in their 55-plus years, or age 50-plus years, or whatever it is, so.
Counselor Harmsen and I will be present at the Public Works Open House on Sunday, May 18, from 1:00 to 3:00 for our listing post. So come visit us up at the dump.
That's a great bumper sticker.
Kelly, please update the ad for them.
All right, hearing nothing else?
Sorry, my bad. I'll let you all go in just a second. So I, on Monday, I was able to get my shift covered and go to Des Moines because there was, I know we're all unfortunately familiar with the four students at the university who not only just random, just without provocation had their visas revoked. These are immigrant students. They also had their student status terminated and were told amongst other things that one of their options was to leave the country. And I don't know if, who's, if everybody's been following this directly, but they filed, they, they were approved a restraining order in federal court in Des Moines, and I, they just got another extension on that restraining order. So it was a very good thing. The staff or the attorneys who argued for our students did an extremely good job. It was no contest. I mean, DHS could not, they were doing a bad job because their arguments were terrible. So I just wanted to say that that happened, and I was very happy that that happened. I also wanna say just a really big thank you to city staff for working with us and getting a regular trash can service out to one of the larger homeless encampments in town. They were requesting trash can service for quite a while, and we were able to just kind of like get it together and get some stuff out there. And I went and talked with a lot of those residents, and they were extremely happy for those trash cans out there. They're able to clean up after themselves without having to walk across, by the highway, a long ways to get their trash. And so they're all very happy about that. Thank you so much, staff. It means a lot to them.
And it will be also added to the regular route for picking up trash?
Yep, it's on a regular route, as far as I know. Yep.
We're gonna move on to item number 13, report on item from city staff, city manager's office.
No update tonight, thank you.
City attorney?
No, thank you.
City clerk? All right, we're at item number 14. Could I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved, Mo.
Second.
All right, move by Mo, second by Mayor Pro Tim because she's right here to my left in my ear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned for the night. Good night.